Good evening and welcome. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board on November 4th, 2021. Pursuant to Section 13 of the United Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2021 through January 2022. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 22nd, 2021. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution published in the January 25th, 2021 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, PrincetonNJ.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, the coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note, members of the public will have an opportunity at specific points in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment should virtually raise your hand using the Raise Hand button near the center of the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity or hate speech, or that relate to matters that are not before the Board, will be muted. Carrie, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman? Mr. O'Donnell? Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. Chow? Mr. Taylor? And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quarrel.
Thank you. Announcements. First up, the minutes that are on the agenda tonight will be carried to the December 2nd meeting. I understand that Carrie has been slammed. And these were particularly challenging minutes because it was a very long meeting, so so that's fine. We'll carry those to December 2nd. We have a special meeting next week, Tuesday, the 9th, to look at temporary space for the University Art Museum, and I think an empty storefront on Hullfish. So that should be interesting and hopefully quick. And it's my understanding that we will continue to meet by Zoom through the end of the year. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but we're following Council's on that, and I believe Council plans to meet via Zoom through the end of the year, so just a heads up that we'll be doing that as well. Are there any other announcements by staff or Planning Board members? Okay. Applications. Trustees of Princeton University continued from October 21st. This preliminary and final major site plan for environmental sciences in the School of Applied Science, ES and C's Ivy Lane and Prospect Avenue, Block 49.01, Lot 5, and Block 50.01, Lot 18. This is file number P 2020-872P. At our last meeting, we concluded public comment, and what we need to do now is go over conditions of approval, and I think there was a memo with all conditions laid out that was circulated by Mr. Muller for everybody to take a look at. I had a few fairly minor comments on that, and so I guess the right next step, Mr. Muller, is for you to go through those, or do you?
I don't know if I need to.
What would you like to do?
I had mentioned right at the beginning of my memo that I thought that the variances for the signs should be addressed because they hadn't been addressed. And I thought maybe we could do that, reopen it very quickly, and either Christopher can make a representation. I'm not even sure how many variances the university wants. I'm not sure they know. But Christopher, why don't you jump in and see how you use it?
Let me just say, so the municipal ordinance doesn't really contemplate signage for the university. So a lot of times, we're forced to come back in with separate applications because there's really no appropriate signage, particularly when you have these buildings within the campus. So we've identified a number of spots, but we don't have donor names yet, so we don't have particular designs. If the Board was willing or inclined to, we could, because we did request the variances. We do have, the sign is identified in the site plan, but we don't have any details yet, but you know, this is a very large complex. You know, we would imagine something like 13 signs or so. If you could have a condition where we could submit it to the zoning officer for review and approval, you know, based on, you know, program. So you know what our sign packages look like. They're generally very in keeping with the size and scales of the project. It would look very nice, and it would be up to, I guess, Derek to review and approve it. And to the extent that we're asking something that he's not comfortable with, we would have to appear before the Board again. And it would be up to-
That sounds reasonable to me. Mr. Muller, do you have any comment on that, or Mr. La Place, or any members of the Board?
I think the idea of handling it administratively is a good idea, especially the Board has such a heavy load to come back just for this. It just doesn't seem to be worth it. Now, I do see that Derek and Jim in their memo indicated they would be six, but there might be as many as 13?
Yes, I would say. Well, I'll ask Ron that question, but I think we were looking upwards in that area.
Yes, I would say that could be 12 to 13 because the buildings have multiple entrances. We don't want to, we need to have adequate signage.
Now, also Derek and Jim saying, each of the signs will be no greater than 16 square feet. No, they'll be greater than 16 square feet, which is the ordinance limit, but not, will not exceed 40 square feet. Each sign is proposed to be 36 square feet. Is that still accurate, or is that a bit up in the air also?
I'd say that's a placeholder. I think, you know, it depends on our donors and how they want to recognize them. It's their gift. So we could have a, we could have a Woo Hall, which is really nice and sweet, or we could have a Julius Romo Rebinoits Hall, which is more complicated.
Yeah, okay. So I'm comfortable with that approach, even, you know, living up to Derek in terms of size. Derek, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Now, in terms of the memo, I mean, I certainly go through them. I hope, I don't know that we need to, but what I would suggest, Louise, is that Board members simply, you know, ask if they have any concerns or questions about any provisions, or want anything to be added, that they do so, and we can handle it this way. Michael, let me just finish, and I know you want to speak. Just to underscore, obviously, this came out at the end of the last discussion, at the end of the hearing. And the idea was, I think Louise and Ty, you might have suggested, you know, why don't you try and talk to the university's attorney, yeah, try to sort things out. And that, I thought the best way of doing it was actually putting it in the way I put it in, which would go directly into the resolution. It's in resolution format. And there was a lot of communications back and forth between Christopher and me, and Jim, Dan Dobremowski as well, Dan McGinnis. And that's what we came up with. Now, the only thing I didn't include, basically, Jim raised a question at one point. He said, you know, there's a couple of very elaborate provisions dealing with parking. And don't we already have that covered in the East Campus Garage Resolution? And isn't it redundant? There are a lot more, there are a lot more detail than a very short provision in the East University Campus Garage, which I can read to everybody. So I thought it was worth keeping them in, but that might be a discussion item. Before we open it to the Board members, what I'd like to do is just go through the comments I've received from a couple of different Board members, and make sure everybody's comfortable with them.
Okay.
Please.
Yep. Okay, first is from Louise. And she suggests, and condition B, that we add, and B reads, "The university shall engage in the process with the municipal staff and Princeton Prospect Foundation, etc.," to add to that the Landscape Subcommittee. So it was a good idea. Everybody comfortable with that? Michael?
Yeah, this relates to the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michael.
Well, yeah, I was just going to comment on this particular point. I'm happy to report that progress has already been made in this area. The university has been working very closely with the Princeton Prospect Foundation and municipal staff. There's been at least two meetings, and the landscape plan for the front of what is now 91 Prospect, which will be the site of the Theres Pavilion, has really come a long way, and it seems to address all the concerns of the Board and advocates that spoke up about how the front area of the new Theres Pavilion would relate to the rest of the front lawns along Prospect Avenue. So I just wanted you to know there's been great progress made on that front already.
Okay. Michael, had you spoken at the last session? Have I sworn you in?
I don't think so.
Okay, if you could raise your hand, and Derek, if you could raise your hand too. I know you just said one word. Do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give, or have given?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then if I go on with Louise's, the next one is on K, where there was just a typo. It says, "A Municipal Auburns Landscape Architect." And she said, "Well, Municipal Auburns isn't the landscape architect, is he?" So I think we should just say Municipal Auburns and Landscape Architect, and Municipal Landscape Architect. Okay. And then just really minor on PP. It read, "The university's engineer shall submit a bond estimate for the installation of there." She just took out "there," obviously. It should have been either "its" or just not having any words, so I just took out the "there." So those were Louise's. Everybody comfortable with Louise's? Okay, then Tim sent an email in which he also agreed with everything that Louise suggested. He said, "A bigger question. Is there a way to memorialize Ron McCoy's comment that he will follow up regarding the safety concerns raised by the proposed bike gutter?" And I take it, Ron, the answer is, you do that. My thought is, you know, we're not going to try and engineer anything here. I mean, that's crazy. But you look into that further and just make a decision as to what, if anything, should be done, and report back to, I guess it would be, report back to Jim?
Yes, yes. I think our goal would be to establish best practices.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
And I'll put that in. I'm not going to get the exact language because, obviously, this isn't the resolution. You're actually going to see this all again when the resolution is drafted. And in addition to that, and Michael, if you could jump in again. There was a lot of back and forth today between Dan Dobremowski, Carrie, I think Michael was part of it, where there were discussions with the university. It might have been a landscape committee meeting. Was that this morning, Michael?
Not this morning. We met yesterday.
Oh, yesterday, okay. I couldn't tell from the material. And there were some items that the decision was that they should be wrapped into compliance review for ESC, SEAS. And Michael, do you want to elaborate on that?
Well, I mean, there's details that range from the type and placement of plantings to treatment of paths, amenities like seating.
Are you, you're talking about the Ivy Club?
I'm sorry, the Ivy Club, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Back of Ivy Club and its relation to-
Jim, yeah, I wasn't as directly involved with Ivy.
Oh, okay. Jimmy, you here?
I mean, is that what you're talking about, though? I think it is, but I just want to double-
It is.
Ivy's about access, vehicular access.
Yeah, okay. Jim, you want to speak on this?
I think you already have, but go ahead.
Oh, did I swear in previously?
Okay, I thought I spoke on this application, but go ahead.
Okay, I do swear from the testimony about to give you the truth.
I do.
Okay. Do you want to just elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, no, and I think we worked it out with Christopher over the last few days, but it had been my intent in my comment to have the university verify the deliveries, the operation that takes place today, and whether or not the changes around Leafy Lane and Roper Lane, what that impact has on deliveries and access to the eating clubs, not just the Ivy Club, but the Cannon Club. We are talking about, we're still talking about ES and Cs, because I'm getting a little confused with all that.
Okay.
Okay.
Carrie, you could jump in also, but the import of these emails between Carrie and Christopher, and I think Michael might have been on one of them, dealt with landscaping. And the point was, there were still some landscape elements that had to be worked out for Ivy Club, but it made sense to wrap them into the compliance review for ESCs.
Okay, I thought you were asking me to talk about the access issue as well.
No, I'm sorry.
That was Dan Dobremowski's, and the Landscape Subcommittee's decision was that ES and Cs can take care of the outstanding issues with the Ivy Club. That, and that was in order for the Ivy Club to be signed and finished. We signed the, we signed the documents and issued the documents today for the Ivy Club subdivision and site plan improvements to go ahead. It's just that, as part of that, there was an agreement that whatever landscape, remaining landscape issues are, and I don't know if Dan is on tonight, I don't see him. Whatever those were, and I'm not privy to exactly what those were, that they were being taken care of with ES and Cs.
Okay. So just for clarity, I assume what we're talking about here is the, there was a subdivision, and as part of that subdivision, the university is developing Ivy Lane and will be planting trees. Some of those trees will provide shade over into the Ivy Club property. Is that the landscaping we're talking about here? Because that's part of this project and shown on our landscape plan.
Unfortunately, I have no idea. This, the condition, the condition in the Ivy Club application was that the application, the site plan, would be reviewed by the Landscape Subcommittee. I am not on the Landscape Subcommittee. I don't know what the resolution of that was. But all I saw was correspondence from Dan Dobremowski that everything had been worked out, and whatever remaining issues exist, and I don't know what those are, are being taken care of under the ES and Cs project. Michael, do you have anything better than that? I don't know anything more than-
I don't, and I was wondering, you know, a big part of the landscaping plan for that southerly edge of the new Ivy Club lot is the rebuilding of that brick wall and gateway. And I didn't know whether the university has a hand in that, or that's all the responsibility of the Ivy Club.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that's what it is, because the Ivy Club's doing their site plan and their restoration and their landscaping within the site. And we indicated that we would be putting the shade trees and the planting along Ivy Lane that will help to enhance the way that property looks, and that's part of what the university is going to do.
Christopher means Leafy Lane, not Ivy Lane.
I said Ivy. I'm sorry, Leafy Lane. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it.
Okay. I know, as per the email chain, that Dan had done a memo. I assume it was a compliance memo, and there were actually a number of points in the compliance memo, and then-
So Jerry, I want to be clear. When you say Chris, I think you're talking about Chris Tar, not me.
That's correct.
Oh, yes, right, Chris Tar. I'm sorry.
That's why I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay. Right, absolutely, Chris Tar. And I thought maybe you had some involvement, but obviously you didn't. What I would suggest, because there were a number of items, none of us really are sure exactly what ones remain. Dan is here. I think he's out of the country. I would just suggest that the landscape issues, as identified by Mr. Dobremowski, should be addressed as part of the ESC's compliance. How's that sound?
I think we're okay, but I just want to make sure that we're talking about the boundary, because that's really where we said we would handle it. Because I don't, but I think it's fine. I mean, 95% sure that that's what they're talking about, because the Ivy Club would have addressed all the landscaping issues within the site. As part of that approval, because I was actually handling the subdivision, we indicated that along on the border, we will be providing shade trees. So for example, they have a requirement, or everybody liked to see shade trees in the Ivy property, but we said, listen, we're going to actually do it on the ES and Cs property. So that I'm 100% sure that's what they're talking about, because the Ivy Club itself was not going to plant those trees. That was going to be the university's responsibility when they created Leafy Lane.
Yeah, the two things I'm seeing, there's one, one thing, the placement of the overhead wires underground are the responsibility of Princeton University as per the land sale agreement between Princeton University and the Ivy Club. And then the second thing is new trees, and this is along the border between the two properties. New trees will be planted in the eight-feet-wide planting strip in between the club's new parking lot wall and Leafy Lane on the university property. The planting of these trees is the responsibility of the university as part of their ES and Cs project. The trees are shown on the most recent site plan prepared by the university design team, so I think that's-
Yep, totally true.
Were you reading from the resolution for the Ivy Club?
Nope, I was reading from an email earlier today, but I think that, I think that Carrie had copied and pasted it out of-
Yeah, and you're copying it. Oh, it's to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it was to-
Mostly you and Julie.
More than me, but yeah.
Well, you and Julie, and then a couple of people copied.
Yeah, this was to to make sure it was okay to sign off on the Ivy Club project earlier today.
That's absolutely true.
Yeah, so I, as I said, I think the best bet is to indicate, really, is just to say the landscaping items that were not addressed, and the decision during the course of the discussions that came out of the Landscape Subcommittee was to defer them to resolution compliance for ESCs will be addressed during resolution compliance, and Mr. Dobremowski will identify what they are.
I think, Jerry, we do have to say that it's the border landscaping, because we'd have no rights to that property. You know, we don't own Ivy, but we did commit to the trees on the border, and that's what they're talking about. And the condition should specifically say that the placement and species and location of those trees, which are already shown on our site plan and are there, will be reviewed as part of, you know, and approved and built by the university. But I guess the Landscape Subcommittee can take a look at that as part of when they review the whole project.
How about rather than those two trees, because here's what Carrie writes in the email today. "The site plans for the Ivy Club are ready to sign off. I had to double-check with Dan Dobremowski about the landscape plans that were included with the site plans, and make sure they were acceptable after Landscape Subcommittee review. There were several outstanding items, but obviously, Christopher, they all come out of landscape plans that the university submitted." And maybe that's, maybe that's sufficient.
Yeah. This could reference Item 3 in Mr. Dobremowski's memo, because that's what I was reading from when I I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not Item 3, Item 5.
Well, this Item 1.
That's where that, the Item 5 in Mr. Dobremowski's memo, as referenced in, you know, the email from 12:15 today, is this specific item.
Okay, I would be a little more generic, because-
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Okay, everybody comfortable with that? And basically, that's all I have in terms of additional additions to the set of conditions. Anybody have any questions or comments, any changes or additions, deletions?
I very much appreciate all of the communication back and forth to put the conditions in shape this way, because I I think it was very clear, and I'm certainly ready to move forward with it.
Okay, that's great, yeah. And the university was very responsive, as was staff. Okay, so if we're finished with board deliberations, it sounds like we are?
I think so. Do anybody have anything else to say before someone moves this application?
Just to go- I'm sorry.
I would really love to move the application, but if you have something more to say, Jerry?
I was just going to, I was just going to-
Hold my breath.
Well, you can, because it's going to be very, very short. I was just going to say, the relief, they're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, a variance for an unspecified number of wayfinding signs. You could call them that, right, Ron?
Yes.
Wayfinding signs of unspecified dimensions. It would be subject only to review by the zoning officer, and the conditions we just went over.
Are they, are they, they're actually building identification?
Yeah, I was just-
That's part of a wayfinding system. I mean, we consider building ideas as part of wayfinding, so you can call them wayfinding, building identification, or donor signs. They're all the same thing.
Okay.
So all three.
And if I could, if I could just be sure, these conditions are going to be listed in the, in the resolution?
Yeah, exactly as they appeared in memo I sent out with the additions we made tonight.
Okay.
Great. So Ms. Sax?
You can start breathing again.
I didn't make it. I cheated. So I would like to move the application, and Jerry, do you want to just give the specific language of what exactly it is that I'm moving?
Moving to approve the application for preliminary and final site plan approval, grant a variance for an unspecified number of wayfinding, building identification signs of dimensions not specified either. They would be submitted only to the zoning officer for his approval, and would not go back to the Board, and the conditions what we just went over.
As stated, so moved. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Contemporaneous with Mr. Texarney, so I yield my second to Mr. Texarney.
Moved by Ms. Sax, seconded by Mr. Texarney. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes, with pleasure.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes. This is a really, really exciting project of extraordinary scale, and I'm really looking forward to seeing it take shape and appreciate the university's commitment to these programs that I think will have a global impact. I think it's fair to say, so nicely done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the time.
Next up, we have, again, trustees of Princeton University, Major Site Plan for the New Health Services Building. This is Washington Road, Block 45.01, Lot 101. File number P 2121-020P.
Madam Chair?
Mr.?
Notice, notice is proper, and Carrie, can you confirm the proof of publication service are in order?
That is confirmed.
Okay. Proof of publication service, as Carrie indicated, are in order, and the Board has jurisdiction.
Great, thank you. Mr. La Place, do you want to say anything before we turn to Mr. DeGrazia?
Yeah, I'd like to do an introduction. Thank you, Chair Wilson.
And Michael, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
That's one of them.
We're going to stay with Princeton University and move west from the evolving East Campus over to the Central Campus across Washington Road to a location where a really interesting project is going to be taking place, which is before you this evening. to a location where a really interesting project is going to be taking place, which is before you this evening. Um, the development of a new healthcare center for the university population. Um, the site of the proposed new healthcare center is south of the existing Macosh Health Center. Um, so this is not too far away from Washington Road. Um, and um, it's it's really centrally located. It's a very interesting project, and that will incorporate an existing historic building on campus. Um, the nineteen twenty-three built um Eno Hall will be incorporated into the new construction, which you'll hear about in a few minutes. Uh, two existing buildings will be demolished, two smaller buildings that are rather obsolete, uh nineteen thirty-eight hall and the Rock Magnetism Laboratory. Um, so uh, the use, this project is in the E two education zone, and um, this is a um, a permitted academic support use, so there's no problem as far as the zoning. And um, I think I'll leave it at that and let the university do its presentation, but um, I think you'll find us to be a very interesting application.
Thank you, Michael. Do you have anything to say?
Why not, why don't we do?
No, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Christopher.
No, I was just going to say thank you, Michael, for the introduction. Um, you've provided a nice um summary. Um, as as you said, it's preliminary and final site plan. The focus of this facility is on medical care, counseling, wellness. You know, it's a facility that focuses on both uh physical and mental health. Um, we have a very detailed presentation, as you probably expect at this point, about seventy slides, so I'd like to turn it over to Ron McCoy, and I um, Jerry will have to have him sworn in um to start the presentation.
Why don't we do what we usually do, if please, if you would like to do it this way, all university witnesses at once. So if everybody who may testify can put their face, their image on the screen and raise your right hand. And do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So 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 sworn from what we start with, Ron, and go from there. If you could say your full name, spell your last name.
Ron McCoy, M C C O Y. Let me do the roll call here for Princeton, if I can get this thing going. So uh, let's do Tatiana Chulica.
Yeah, my name is Tatiana Chulika, landscape architect. My last name is C H O U L I K A.
Mark Gabriel.
Mark Gabriel, G A B R I E L. Stormwater engineer with Nitch Engineering.
Robin Izzo.
Robin Izzo, I Z Z O, Assistant Vice President for Environmental Health and Safety.
George Jacquesman.
George Jacquesman, J A C Q U E M A R T, uh, traffic and parking consultant for the university for B F J planning.
Charles Tennyson. Were you just?
Skip me.
No, no, you're good, you're good. We heard, we heard you.
Oh, you can. It's showing.
Yes.
I of course.
You're good.
Without much.
Uh-oh, now, now we can argue you. There you go.
How about now?
Yes, good.
I I have some weird delay on my screen. I'm going to try to log in again, but Charlie Tennyson, Director for Transportation and Parking Services.
Okay, great. James Corner.
Um, James Corner, landscape architect with Field Operations in New York, uh, with my partner Tatiana Chulika.
Okay, uh, John McGill, let's go ahead and introduce you.
Hi, John McGill with W R N S Studio. We're the architects and designers for the building.
Okay. Um.
We have Jared Messina on the um, in the, not as a panelist, but if somebody can bring him over.
Okay, done.
We'll have to have you sworn in uh separately, Jared.
Hey, I'm here. Jared Messina, I'm the project manager for Princeton University.
Um, if you could raise your right hand, or do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So that's one of them.
Okay. May I begin?
Sure.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So we've submitted a PowerPoint presentation, I believe it's seventy slides. We'll pull that up and identify it and mark it as Exhibit A one.
Yeah. And Christopher, if you could send me a copy, a hard copy of that?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
It's already received.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, as uh Michael Laplace said, we're here to talk about the new home for the university health services. And we're very excited, um, also, as Michael said, to be able to um incorporate uh Eno Hall, which you're looking at here in this title page, so let's be page number one. Looking at the south elevation of the existing Eno Building. As we walk through this, through the slides, you'll see how this is incorporated uh into the project. The Eno Hall in our records is completed in nineteen twenty-four by Day and Clouder, two of the best collegiate Gothic architects who worked on the Princeton campus. Now on slide two, this is the site plan from the twenty twenty-six campus plan. Uh, you'll see at the bottom edge of the slide where it begins to turn gray, that's Goheen Walk. The site right here, this large site here is the site of um Eno and the proposed addition uh to to the building. As I've probably, as we have said in earlier other presentations regarding the campus plan, the campus plan is primarily about testing capacity of land. It doesn't really go into specific architectural ideas. Um, and uh, when we identified this site, uh, we were not sure that we'd we'd be able to save the existing collegiate Gothic building, but happily, as we got into the detailed programming for this facility, we were able to reuse Eno Hall into the future home for health services. While I'm here, I'll also point out that the the colors here, the kind of salmon color to the west of the site indicate uh future areas of change. Primarily, you're seeing immediately to the west of the uh, you know, hall site, the area for future Hobson College will be coming to you next year in two twenty-two for that. And west of that is is Dylan Hall, Dylan Gymnasium, also to be coming before the board. To the east of the site is Gil Hall. Uh, some of the additions on the south side of Gil will be removed, and Gil will become the new home for Schmidt Hall. So this is a kind of significant area of change in the campus. Above uh this, this strong east-west connector, which is a new campus plan idea, you'll see the existing Macosh Health Center right there, so that'll help orient yourselves. The first campus center is just next to that. So with all of our projects, we get, we begin with a value proposition, which is really a statement of promise that we're going to make to ourselves, that we're going to achieve for this project. Um, it's important to know that the existing Macosh Infirmary is nearly one hundred years old. And when it was designed, the campus population of undergraduates was about twenty-five hundred students. We are now uh planning for the growth of the undergraduate population to five thousand seven hundred. And over that, over that one hundred years, our graduate student body population, faculty and staff have all grown. They are all served by university health services. And so this project right sizes the university health services building and also provides capacity for for future growth. The the value proposition here talks about advancing the culture of health and well-being, promoting physical and mental health, and creating a kind of interpersonal connection for the well-being of our students. And this last phrase of humanity centered in healing and character, those are the aspirations for the architecture and the experience of the building. I'm going to begin here on slide four to talk about some of the context and planning principles. Now, looking on slide five, you'll see a bit of a larger scale uh campus context with the health services proposed site located in the middle here. And many of the same uh sort of conditions that I talked about in the last last slide. But importantly, the diagonal walk, which comes past the new art museum and this east-west connector and Goheen Walk, so the building sits at a crossroads um between a lot of existing major pathways on campus, and it's right adjacent to the first campus center. So we're very fortunate to be able to identify a central campus site for uh the health services building, because the health services building is really critical to campus life. And being able to have a central campus site for the facility rather than a peripheral site uh is a fantastic opportunity for the university. Now I'm on slide six, which shows, highlights uh the the kind of network of pathways. I would say that um the diagonal walk project, one of our challenges is this, there's a lot of topography in this area, and the diagonal walk project is a separate project that will tie into the health services project and will provide an accessible pathway through campus heading from from the north to the south. As we get into the presentation, we'll show you that all the immediate walkways around the building are also designed to be ADA compliant. But those immediate walkways aren't helping us much if we can't get to the building. And so separately, outside of this project, we'll be enhancing pathways around this neighborhood so that it's fully accessible and it becomes a kind of uh successful campus life center. Now I'm on slide seven, uh, again, zooming in a little bit uh closer. You'll see Eno Hall here highlighted within the boundary of the site and the U H S site indicated here. As was mentioned previously, nineteen thirty-eight hall will be demolished as uh to make way for the U H S building. And then in the future, the buildings to the west, uh, most of those buildings, with the exception of uh Wu Hall, will be removed to create a home for the new um uh Hobson College. And some of the wings on the Gil Hall south side will also be removed to make homes for the new Schmidt Hall. I'll I'll use this slide to point out a little bit of context. There's a driveway here that Gil Lane is connected to a drive. It's also, we also call it Gil Lane. It comes out uh with access onto Wash- onto Washington Road. That would be the site for ambulance arrival and deliveries. Uh, deliveries will be, will be diminished because Gil Hall is um uh changing from a laboratory use to a computer science building and will will not have this loading dock here. And you'll see again, as I get further into the slides, that we're providing a location for the ambulances. Uh, the ambulance service to this building, um, I think I got some data from our health service colleagues, averages about slightly less than two uh visits per week. So it's not an intensive use, but obviously, it's a highly critically important use so that when when ambulances do need to make a transfer at the health services building, they can do so quickly and efficiently. Uh, now I'm on slide eight. Uh, this was a request from uh staff just to show some of the the turning radius of the training movements of the fire trucks. So this shows that that turning movement as a fire truck can move up the fire lane to the sort of midpoint of the block between uh Goheen and the first lawn, and then can back up and then turn back down toward Gil Lane and out on Washington, out to Washington Road. This dotted circle of to the right here, that's the driveway and parking area that will be removed. And then this area right here is is the parking for ambulance, and one disabled parking space will also be provided uh in that location. Now I'm on slide nine, and slide nine is a giving you a bit of a the context uh for the building. We're looking uh from the north to the south. Uh, Gil Lane is here on the left. You can see the landscape to the south of Eno, nineteen thirty-eight hall, which we removed to make way for the for the addition onto Eno. We're looking across Goheen, over Scully, and out to Po Field, to the new site of the residential colleges, seven and eight. Uh, so this gives you a bit of context. The all this parking and asphalt in this part of the of the site will be removed to enhance the pedestrian and cycling aspect of the neighborhood. Now I'm on slide ten, these are just some slides, there's a little key map up in the upper right here, which shows where these users are taken from. They're all looking at the south side uh uh of of Eno. Uh, the one on the right is directly on the south side. On the left, we're approaching it from Goheen Walk. And on the number one here, this is the walk uh up Gil Lane, so this is on the east side of the future U H S facility. Slide eleven is a transition slide. I'm going to talk about the building program. Slide twelve. I'm going to walk through a series of um of plan diagrams to give you a sense of uh how the building is organized. It is on a steep, on a sloping site, as I mentioned just a minute ago. And it's a generally one level higher on the north side at Eno than it is on the Goheen side. So you'll see that there are entrances at the at the northern end and at the southern end, but there, those entrances are one level apart. And then we have ways of through through elevators and through uh accessible ramps to negotiate all of those grades. So this is um the level that shows level A, which is that the Goheen Walk level. Um, and Goheen Walk is just slightly above the cloister garden, so you actually would step down if you wanted to enter into the cloister garden or into this pre-function area. Uh, you select, you step also slightly down a little bit less to get into the the pavilion. The pavilion is a facility that promotes health and wellness, wellness for U H S. And it will also serve other university needs as a kind of general all-around space, but it's it's an opportunity to create a beacon for what health and wellness activities and services that are provided to the university community. And that kind of makes it present in a very prominent way on a major campus walkway. The cloister garden, as you'll see in the slides that Tatiana and Jim Corner talk about, is part of the strategy for creating an overall healing environment. Interior surrounding that cloister garden, you'll see the various services, diagnostic services, occupational health, and outpatient medical services. Uh, this uh blue arrow here is a ramp that goes from level A and goes up to the ambulance access that I pointed to on that site plan. And then the the lower level of Eno is a sort of back a house uh service activities. You'll see here up in the upper left, just a sort of um overall size comparison of the existing Macosh Infirmary uh and the new U H S facility, which is combined with the space of Eno and the addition. So we're we're more than doubling the space for health services on campus. Now I'm going to go to slide um thirteen. And now we're at level one, so this is the Eno Hall entry level. And at this level, there are, there are two entrances, one into the historic entrance to the north side of Eno Hall. Um, and another one, a new entrance on the east into the atrium. The atrium is a uh uh daylight space that can connects the existing Eno Hall to the new addition to the south of it. So there's an addition at grade from the east. From the north, we have to navigate a few steps uh at the southern end, and that's done through an elevator here that if someone came in the north entrance with the, which is an accessible entrance, they would catch this elevator, go down a few feet, and then come into the atrium. At this level, we have the main reception. So from the south entrance, there are stairs here and an accessible ramp on the west side of the building that come up to a porch and to a winter garden. The winter garden again is another healing space, kind of interior space uh of uh of landscape, taking advantage, advantage of principles of biophilic design to enhance the experience of the of the facility. We have uh around this sort of heart of the facility, there's counseling and psychological services, shared resources, health promotion, reception, and more outpatient uh medical care. So and all those spaces wrap around both the cloister, and they have kind of a presence on this entrance atrium. Now I'm on slide fourteen, this is a level two, one level above all that. Administration happens in the in the historic Eno Hall. Uh, there's a good fit between program and spaces available there. We're looking at the second level of the atrium. The atrium is really a three-story high space. This winter garden is a two-story high space. Uh, there's the upper level of counseling and like psychological services on the west and the administrative and executive suite on this southeast corner of the building. And um probably, in my opinion, the best staff lounge on Princeton University's campus is going to be right, right here with a fantastic location. Then on pay, on on slide three, on level three, as we go up to page fifteen. This is the infirmary. This is a a critical part of the uh university health services on campus. So these are rooms that students can be uh staying overnight either for quarantine or for illness. Um, and there are also two parent suites at the southern, southern, southwest, southeast corner of of this level. Now I'm on slide sixteen, and this helps to explain some of the topography to this site. This is a section taken through the building, looking to the west. So Goheen Walk and the lower level are on the left here. That's level A, as I mentioned, you'd go down a few steps to get into the cloister garden or up a ramp or a set of stairs to get to a landing, which brings you in the south entrance of the building, to the two-story high uh winter garden, the three-story high atrium, and you see existing Eno Hall with its entrance at level one on the north. And as I mentioned, you also could enter the eastern entrance into that atrium. You you'd be coming right in and looking at this wall of glass. This wall of glass is looking out to one of the many landscapes and so. And so that lobby, atrium lobby is, is sitting, looking to the east into a beautiful garden. The building has a kind of light touch as it connects to Eno. You'll see this in several of the renderings that I'll show a little bit later. So there's a, so that Eno, the kind of integrity of Eno is preserved while the atrium connects it to the, to the new addition to the south.
Now it's like seven.
Interrupt for a second here, I noticed we don't have our project engineer, he's in attendees. Carrie, could you pull over, Chris Lovett? As we're getting into site planning and landscaping, I thought he would, should be on just, there's questions.
Yes. All right, slide seventeen is a transition slide, I'm going to now head it off to James Coroner. And then James is going to introduce Tatiana. So I don't know if you want to swear in both, they've already been sworn.
They're already sworn in, yes, sir.
Okay, so, so James.
James, we'll have to go through your credentials. Can you please tell us a little bit about your education licensing?
Yeah, I'm a professionally registered landscape architect. I've had over thirty-five years of professional experience. I'm registered in New York, in New York and New Jersey and twelve other states in the US. I'm an emeritus professor of landscape architecture and open design at the University of Pennsylvania. And I have the great pleasure of serving as Princeton's landscape architect.
Thank you. Can we also, Tatiana, can you give us your qualifications at this time?
Um, yes, my name is Tatiana Shurika, I'm a landscape architect. I have a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture from the Edinburgh College of Art at the University of Edinburgh in Scotland. I have a master in sciences in the management of natural resources from the University of Edinburgh in Scotland. I have a master in landscape architecture from the University of Pennsylvania in Philadelphia. Been a member of the American Society of Landscape Architects for over thirty years. And I've been registered in the state of New York for over twenty-seven years. I've been working on, at Princeton for almost four years now.
We like to present them as landscape architects.
Uh, thank you, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I'd like to ask if, I, I have supervised all of the work that we do at Princeton. But this is such a detailed project and Tatiana has been the day-to-day design lead on this. I'd like to ask if it is okay to the committee for Tatiana to actually make this presentation.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, thank you, Tatiana.
Thank you. So this is the site plan for the university health services. As Ron described, it's very central, but the building also was designed with, you know, with a goal to be open to the landscape around it, even though it's a small site. It's very open and you can get to it from all four sides, which makes it very welcoming. Nowadays, people believe that nature is helpful in promoting wellness, physical and mental health. And we work very closely with the architect to provide, you know, as much interaction between the building and indoor spaces with the surrounding landscape. So the next slide, which is slide nineteen, is basically showing that on the east side of the building and the west side of the building, there are what we call interim landscapes. These are submitted with this project as they look on this plan. However, in the future, there will be a project called Schmidt Hall on the east side and another one called Hobson College on the west side. And those will just come with a modification of these landscapes on either side of the building. The next slide, which is slide twenty, shows the heart of the building. And the heart of the building is actually a garden. It's the, we call it the cloister garden, but it's also was thought through as a healing place. As you know, it is on level A, as described in the section by Ron. And it's only accessible from the inside of the building. It's not open to, you know, access from the outside. So it's a place of repose, of healing, of quiet, it's very green. The next slide shows on the west side of the building, an extension of the pavilion, which is basically, as described by Ron, a place to promote health and well-being and also be open to the rest of the campus and in the future to Hobson College on the west side of the building. The next slide shows the extension to the west of this landscape going north towards the future Hobson College, but also how it connects in to the building and how it allows people to come from the west side along the ramps that Ron described. And so it will be very easy to access the building from the west side of the ramp and to the front door. The south, the south front door. On the north side is what we call a shade garden on slide twenty-three. And this shade garden is basically an extension of the indoor atrium. So when you come in on the east side into the atrium, you're going to look straight through the atrium to a big glass panel. And across the glass panel, as seen here on the right, you will be, you'll see green, so it will feel very open, very airy and very different from the current situation of the health center at Princeton. And that is, you know, considered to really be very helpful to mental health. The next slide, which is slide twenty-four, is showing the pedestrian circulation. As described by Ron in the large campus plans, there are some major primary routes here. One of them is Goheen Walk, which exists today. And from Goheen Walk extend to the north, two, two routes. One on the east side, which is the diagonal walk, and one on the west side, which will go through the Hobson College all the way up to the north and the museum. So it, on the north side is basically what will become the east-west connector, as described by Ron. In this diagram, it is shown as a secondary route. But in the future, when Schmidt and Hobson come online, the east-west connector will become a primary route, connecting everything. And this is the pedestrian circulation and accessibility to the site. It's obviously really important because it's a health center. And in light blue, you see all the ADA routes that bring you into the building and around the stairs. The red circles are the stairs and the dark blue shows ramps that need railings. The next slide shows basically the landscape material. They're very basic and very typical of what we use at Princeton. We have used some bluestone in the areas that are very close to the building, like the cloister garden and the pavilion terrace. The other parts of the site are, you know, concrete and asphalt and gravel and pretty typical of what we use on the rest of the campus. The next slide, which is slide twenty.
Twenty, okay, good, twenty-six to twenty-seven.
Sorry, twenty-seven, yeah. And the next slide is slide twenty-seven and it shows the furnishing. You will notice that there's a lot of blue lines and those show the railings. And otherwise, it's just basically Princeton standard wood benches and bollards and some tables and chairs extending on the pavilion terrace. The next slide, which is slide twenty-eight, shows the bike parking situation now. And you can see the count on the top right. And if there are questions, maybe other people want to help. But we are proposing forty-nine spaces. Outdoor, there will be forty-two spaces on twenty-one bike racks. And indoors, shown in, in this little circle here on the east side, are seven spaces. And existing spaces are, that we already have seven spaces on site. In the future, there will be more spaces provided by the other projects, Schmidt and Hobson. And there are some spaces on Goheen as well. Um, okay, slide twenty-eight.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, okay, slide twenty-nine is the tree removal plan. And we are removing thirty-seven trees that are over eight inch in diameter at breast height, which means by the calculation shown in the bottom yellow box per the Princeton regulation, that we have to plant fifty-one trees. So the next slide shows that we are planting fourteen of the total of fifty-one on site here, and you can see the list of them. And then the following, this is slide thirty and slide thirty-one shows that the balance of thirty-seven trees will be planted along Prospect Avenue for a total of fifty-one trees. Just to give you some context, we added slide thirty-two that shows how these trees will fit into the overall planting of Prospect Avenue, which, you know, the university has been undertaking and it will continue to do for a while. And then for further context, on slide thirty-three, we are showing that there is a lot of campus tree planting. And you have several tables here showing what was planted in the first capital plan, two thousand and seven to two thousand and seventeen. The capital projects that we are in now until two thousand and thirty. And then what was planted by the university independently from these capital plans between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and ninety. So if we add all these up between two thousand and seven and two thousand and thirty, the university will have planted four thousand six hundred and nineteen trees, which is more than two hundred trees per year. And in addition to that, they're planting nine hundred and fifty-eight trees on the West Windsor campus. So in the next slide, we, which is thirty-four, we're showing that we are using a palette of trees, which is native, but we are also paying a lot of attention to variety and flowering in the season when the students are on campus, which is from September to May, so that there is something to look at from this, all these windows and all this health center in all seasons, if we're talking about healing. And then we are showing on the next slide, which is thirty-five, that we're paying attention to, like every single month of the year to have something happening. And then this goes also not only for the trees and shrubs, but for the next slide and the next following slides for the ground covers that, so that the carpet underground is just also as varied through the seasons. And we have several slides here showing pretty much the variety of plants. So that's thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Finally, this project has a green roof, which is really great because from the building you can look down on it, on the pavilion. And it will have grasses, which are shown on the right-hand side. And on the next slide are the green roof species through the year. And the final slide, which is forty-five, forty-two, sorry, is basically the site plan again. And I think that's the last slide for this section.
That's right, fantastic, thank you. So slide forty-three is a transition slide to stormwater management, stormwater design. Slide forty-four is the first slide in that sequence. And I think Mark Gable, you're going to speak to this, or is this Chris Lovett?
I can, I can speak to this.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark would qualify you?
Absolutely. My name is Mark Gabriel, I'm a project manager in niche engineering. My background is been a professional engineer for, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and in the state of Massachusetts. I have a bachelor's of science in engineering at, from Northeastern University. Been practicing engineering for about seventeen years now.
And you're currently licensed in New Jersey and you've testified before this board before.
You are correct.
Christopher, I have a question. Can we, are we, do we have to wait for all the presentations by the professionals before we ask them questions? Or how are we doing this?
Madam Chair, your call.
Um, do you have a question, Mr. La Place, for, for folks who have already? I mean, I, how many more folks do you have, Mr. DeGresia? I guess I should ask that.
We are on slide forty-four and we have a total of seventy. So we're a little more than halfway through.
Okay, well, let's, let's take a quick pause and see if, if folks have any, any questions for landscape architects or others who have already testified. Any questions or Mr. Mr. La Place?
Thank you, Chair. Um, could we have the slide back up that shows the landscape plan for the site? I, that's fine, yeah, great. I have a question, and I don't think this will be any surprise to the folks at the university regarding the diagonal walk. We talked a lot about it when we were looking at the design for the new museum. And noting in the two thousand and twenty-six plan, I'm looking at the two thousand and seventeen report for the two thousand and twenty-six campus plan. There's an actual section that talks about extending the diagonal walk. It's that important goal of the campus plan. And it talks about an extension of diagonal walk that would establish a continuous pathway from the northwest corner of the main campus down to Poe and Party Fields. And what I see on this plan is the diagonal walk just stops more or less at that east-west sidewalk in front of Eno Hall. At the upper right of this drawing, you can see the diagonal walk is not shown as a continuous pathway down to the fields. It's shown as just stopping at a point north of Eno Hall. And I was wondering, is that just a mistake? Or did you abandon that goal of the campus plan? I'm curious about that.
Yeah, Michael, that's a great question, I'll, I'll respond to that. We have not abandoned the goal of the campus plan. It's exactly, our goal is to do exactly what the language said there, which is to create a continuous intuitive connected pathway all the way down through this area and down to Poe Field. The, the challenge here is that we, we're giving you the site plan of how the project will look when this, when UHS is finished. As we've said, Schmidt Hall, which is the addition, which is the next generation of Gil Hall to the east, is then going to claim most of this area for, for staging. We will retain a, an interim landscape that has accessible ramps to the entrance and an accessible path down to Goheen. It will not have the connectivity and directness that we, that we will then achieve after Schmidt Hall is finished and after we can reclaim the staging area and complete the design that meets the goals that we stated. So you're absolutely right to point that out, but it has to do with the staging. We didn't want to build all that and then tear it out for the Schmidt Hall project.
Okay, thank you, that, that explains it.
And, and Michael, I'd like to just add, in terms of timing, you'll probably see the concept in next year, which is a couple of months away.
Two thousand. Well, well, take your time with the new apple.
Don't go too fast.
Don't have to rush, I'm a very patient person.
We want to get everything to you all at once.
Yes, we know that. Thanks for ruining Christmas.
So I, I have a quick question, which, um, I, I guess maybe now is a good time to pose it because we're, you know, transitioning from landscape architecture to stormwater design. And, and it has to do with how your stormwater design, how your stormwater management system comes together. Do you, is there a team that includes your landscape architects and your engineer? And, you know, the sort of multidisciplinary team? Look at stormwater management sort of on the front end? I guess that's a, that's a question that can be addressed in the next, I'm sorry, I'll let you talk.
Louise, that's a, that's a great question. We have adopted a process with all of our capital projects called, and we've adopted a process called the integrated design process. The integrated design process ensures that. The Integrated Design Process ensures that all the, all the consultants come together simultaneously to solve these problems. So the question about an integrated team is absolutely baked into our process. And we have talked, and I can talk about this, but I don't think we need to go into detail, but I can just assure you that when we're talking about landscape, we are talking about stormwater and landscape simultaneously. It's not linear. We don't do the landscape and then try to solve the stormwater, or do the stormwater and then try to solve the landscape. They're absolutely sort of concurrent efforts, and they're trading off against each other all the time.
Great. That's exactly what I was wanting to get at. And, and I'm sure that as you do these projects on either side of this one, you'll be thinking ahead about what it is that the people who are in these rooms, whether it's outpatient or up in the infirmary, are looking out at. Because what's, what's right here on this site is, is beautiful and green, and it looks like you, you know, very much and appreciate that mind-body connection and plants and all of that. It's just that what happens beyond this footprint is hugely important also. And I see people nodding, so.
Yeah, the next generation will be more beautiful and more green. When we finish the projects on either side of this, it'll be, it'll, it'll continue that, that, that strategy.
Lovely.
Okay, anything else?
No, when, I guess maybe when we get to the architect or whoever is the right person, I would like to understand something more about biophilic design, which is a term I just heard for the first time, and it sounds intriguing, so. Whoever is the right person, probably the architect.
I'm the one, I'm the one who, I'm the one who used it. Architects, the landscape architects use it. It is a of, of concept, I think, that was coined in nineteen eighty-four by psychologists at Harvard. And it, it basically addresses the innate response that humans have to the natural landscape and to animals, that, that this is a kind of, a kind of fundamental human need to have an experience with, with nature and with landscape. And in a building that has to do with healing, it's one of the kind of core principles. You'll see when I start talking more about the details of the interior. We also have, this is our first mass timber building that we're doing in this generation of projects. And so the natural wood and also the winter garden are examples of, of connections to nature.
Splendid. Thank you.
All right. Now, can we go on and talk about the integration of stormwater with landscape?
Please.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to give it back to Mark, but I do want to say that some of the slides that Tatiana just showed and some of this, and this couple of slides that Mark is going to show are slides that I know, Louise, you know, we put together for a campus system conversation with town staff and with Sprab, so that we could try to give people some framework of how individual projects sat within the overall campus systems. And so we're trying to be mindful to bring some of those diagrams into our conversations about individual projects, not as distractions, but to reinforce the idea that all individual buildings on the campus are part of campus systems. So with that, I'll let Mark pick it up.
Thank you very much, Ron. And Ron, before I move into the conversation, Chris, I'm wondering if you want to also have Chris Lovett, just give his credentials, so that way we can easily both talk.
So Chris, we also have to have you sworn in. Jerry, can you have him sworn in? He came late to the show.
Yep. If you could raise your right hand, you, you're somewhere. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure, Chris Lovett, L O V E T T, with V H B. And I have over twenty-five years' experience of a bachelor of science in civil engineering, a P license in New Jersey, as well as Massachusetts and Maine. I've been working in Princeton over ten years. And also work frequently with, with Mark and his firm on stormwater designs where we, we partner together.
Thank you.
Chris and Chris. So speaking about a holistic approach on this project, in regards to stormwater design, Nitro's brought in from, to look at stormwater from a holistic campus perspective and how is on the map here, you can see the different projects on campus and how they, they interact with each other. V H B was brought in as a site civil engineer of record for the project, and they're doing the stormwater design in and around the facility. And they integrate well with FO, as well as James Cornerfield Operations as well, where they integrate the stormwater strategies and around the building with, with them throughout the design of the project. And so on this slide here, this is, some of you may have seen previously, and we, we presented something similar to this as part of the ESSE's project. This slide forty-four shows an overview of the campus just north of Lake Carnegie. It shows the sub watershed divides that generally break up the campus going from west to east. And the UHS facility is, is circled there in red and also in other colors on this slide or other projects that have been in front of the board or, or will be in front of the board in the future. For example, directly next to the UHS facility is a light blue color is the Schmidt Hall project right there. So, you know, when, when looking at stormwater on this project, we, we not only focused on, you know, UHS and and of course, the application has to meet the requirements for UHS, but, you know, we also looked at it holistically on the campus, like, okay, so well, if you have Schmidt Hall directly next to UHS, and we've already talked about diagonal walk, and we've talked about landscape integration there. And so how do we get that to integrate with the stormwaters as well down the road? Because they're so closely tied and knitted together there. So that's slide forty-four. Going to slide forty-five. This is the stormwater design for the Poe Party Field. So just backing up for a second, the UHS project on the left side of the screen there shown, yep, up in that area. That project has a root ring, a roof garden proposed for, for stormwater collection. And the, the project also includes a biore, a couple bio-retention facilities. I believe we have another slide on that. Those two facilities, as well as a treatment device, help maintain that stormwater that is directly in and around the walkways and the building area around there. But since the site is so confined in between Schmidt and the existing buildings of the west, there is an overflow pipe that's being constructed only, right now, only for the UHS project that's going to go down Gil Lane. And that overflow pipe takes the treated, already treated water south to the Poe Party Field System shown here in three, a three-finger arrangement here. This system, as with other systems on campus, it's, it, the soils are a poor type soil for infiltration. It's D. There are some areas of decent infiltration, but for regulatory requirements, it's, it's a D-type soil generally in this area. However, we have designed this system, again, similar to other projects, as an open bottom system to promote that infiltration and recharge and to help meet some campus goals. This system also provides the, the quantity reductions for the project. So the water that we send from the UHS project to the Poe Party Field System, it gets, the quantity of that stormwater gets reduced and gets piped back into the same system that it was previously traveling into before it was captured, and goes out to the Washington Road Stream in a rate that's lower than the pre-existing conditions. Another thing I wanted to point out was that this system, because the Schmidt Hall project is so close and, you know, another future project off to the west of Schmidt, sorry, UHS is so close. We've proposed to bank an additional square footage of impervious area in this system because the Poe Party Field's so large. And, you know, if we're already digging out here, you know, let's put a few more chambers in. And that's detailed in the stormwater report about some additional impervious acreage that we'd like to bank within this system for the Schmidt Hall project and, and potentially another future upstream project. This might all be reminiscent of the soccer stadium for the ESSE's project and having that quantity type system below the soccer facility. And the, all, all treatment for the projects that would discharge here would happen on those project sites before it would discharge this area. So this would be purely just to mitigate the higher stormwater flows. So that's it on forty-five. I'm going to forty-six. Chris, I pick up to this?
Sure, sure. I, I'll talk through this. So the, the site design itself focuses on the water quality opportunities. And then we, we're working with Mark and kind of the holistic approach for this portion of the campus. We would take advantage of the Poe and Party Field System to help alleviate peak flows and provide substantial decreases in peak flows while maintaining the paths. So, so some of the challenges of the site are, are with the grades. It's fairly steep. So that was a very important part of the project was, was creating that connectivity and accessibility to meet IDA access to the building and across campus. But that provides some challenges to our ability to provide larger surface features within the, in the project area. We also wanted to maintain Gohean Walk in the system there with the, the area of trees. So we worked within the, with, with the landscape architect team and then Mark with the, with the overall campus master plan stormwater to develop a program to provide water quality within the site and take advantages of the opportunities that we, we do have. So that includes at the north end of the site, bio-retention areas at the front of Eno Hall. So that'll take areas from the north and, and treat those as to bio-retention basins on either side of the entrance. And those will, those will intercept flows and get into the system. We also have areas of green roof, particularly the pavilion is a good, was a really good opportunity to provide green roof and provide some more water quality treatment and interception and reduce some of the, the rates. We also, throughout the project, are disconnecting the drainage. So that means that the pavement areas were draining them off into the landscaped areas and allowing opportunities for intake in the soils, helping limit what we need for irrigation, helping the health of the plantings, but also providing water quality and reducing flows off the site. So each of the sidewalks through the site are pitched to drain through landscaped areas and get treatment as much as we can. And then we also have, in the, the red box there is a structural water quality treatment device. And that treats the runoff coming from the vehicular paved areas. So there's actually a reduction in vehicular paved areas through the, through the project. But we did want to make sure, it, it's important that we take care, take care of that. That's the most important part to treat. So we do have a structural device there that designed to meet and exceed NGDP requirements that will intercept the roadway drainage and also drainage from other parts of the site and treat that before discharging to the, the red arrow heading south. So that'll send overflows down using the same drainage path as existing conditions. We'll drain it down towards Poe and Party Field, and then ultimately a reduced flow over time to the Washington Road Stream in that existing forty-eight inch pipe that drains there now.
Okay, Mark, I think, were you going to speak to this?
Sure, absolutely. So the stormwater operation and maintenance that Princeton handles themselves on campus, they perform the regular operation and maintenance on both the structural and the landscape-based stormwater infrastructure. And they do that with their civil maintenance staff and a grounds and a landscape maintenance staff of, of forty-four full-time employees. So those forty-four full-time employees maintain that landscape and soil components of green infrastructure. They also report annually, and in this case through two thousand nineteen, I think last year with COVID, it wasn't. But they report out annually on how their operation and maintenance is, is handled and how it is going on the campus. So it is a robust operation and maintenance plan that the university handles on their campus.
Great. All right. I'm going to pick up here, and we're moving on to slide forty-eight, which is site lighting. Transition slide forty-nine is a sort of lighting plan of some of the uplighting that we had shown when we presented to Sprab. Sprab made a request to reduce the amount of uplighting in this part of the, of the, of the design. And we have done that. So you'll see that in the cloister garden, the uplights had been removed. On the left, there's four uplights against the wall. They're not, they're sort of diagonally up against the wall. So those will be retained and that the lighting design will, will meet the standards of leaded gold. Now, moving on to slide fifty, building character and materials, this is a transition slide. And slide fifty-one. So now I'm going to go through about a dozen slides that talk about the architectural character. I'm going to try to go through them quickly and point out some of the key features on each slide to keep it lively. This slide here is an overview. We're looking at a rendering of the project, looking from the, the northeast toward the southwest with Eno in the foreground. And you'll see that on the left side of the slide, there are some window metals and some exposed wood that are part of the design. So those, those are highlighted and pointed to in the, in the diagram. There is some board form cast concrete at the foundation of parts of the building. There is a, a brick that's a Norman-sized brick that'll be used for the new building. We're still working on the final mock-up of those bricks in the final selection. But our goal is to be in the character of the campus and the surrounding buildings, but not a direct duplicate of, of, of Eno Hall. The campus has dozens of bricks, even in this part of the campus. And they have an overall character. We're trying to achieve both an overall character and also a close, a closer similarity to Eno, which is also part of a kind of series of buildings that cascade down the campus in the middle of the campus that have a kind of similar, more burgundy-colored brick to them. You'll see on the right-hand slide, there is ceramic frittered glass in certain locations. It's a bird-safe glass. There is aluminum bronze anodized screens for sun shading control. You'll see those in the renderings. And then you'll see a photograph of the existing brick and limestone on the lower right. Now, on slide fifty-two, this one is a, same, the same rendering without the diagrams of the materials. I think the key thing to point out here is, I mentioned the light touch of how the built, how the new atrium connects to the rooftop of Eno. Daylight comes in through here so that the integrity of Eno is maintained, being separated from the, the new roof over the atrium. You'll see some of that aluminum screening here. You'll see that the new addition has a two-story base, which is compatible with the massing of Eno and steps back slightly to a metal panel system for, for the articulated upper portion. So that you'll see that on the western, the northwestern corner of the building as well. So all that's to try to bring, bring down the mass of the building so that the base of the building, the masonry base is more compatible with the masonry volume of, you know. And slide fifty-three, we're going to spin around the building here. Now we're looking from the southwest. We're looking at with the Gohean Walk in the foreground, the, the, the pavilion that I talked about for health services and wellness programming, which is a friends right on to Gohean Walk. You'll see some of the wood detailing of that pavilion beginning to show itself as well. And I'm going to show a, a number of renderings around this sort of southern entrance. So as we mentioned, there's a series of accessible ramps on the west side that brings somebody up to this landing, which is the primary entrance from the, from the south. There's also a set of stairs which are hidden by this tree here in the foreground that brings it up there. That landing gives way to the winter garden, all looking down onto the cloister garden. We're looking here from the, looking here from the, from the northwest, again, back toward Eno, back toward the light touch of the atrium addition onto Eno and the, the northwest corner of the building. Again, with the, the articulation of the massing stepping back so that the, the sort of compatibility with the volume of, you know, is maintained. So here we are in the, on slide fifty-five, looking from Gohean Walk along the set of stairs that you could take to come up to the south entrance to the, this entrance for the, the entrance portrait through here. Beyond, on the right, is the winter garden. It has a set of sliding doors that open up in, when the weather is nice and the shoulder systems. It has a deep overhang, which is a passive design feature, and it also has It has a a deep overhang, which is a passive design feature, and it also has the uh window screen. Which helps with the pass to design. You'll see this see window screens of the aluminum uh pattern of window screens on all these south facing windows. Which knock down the solar sun for another passive design benefit. Uh you're worth taking past the co- cloister garden in the foreground here. Now it's slide fifty six. Uh this is now that landing of the stairs. Uh the winter garden is right uh in front of us. You'll see the more detail of the aluminum screening. Some of the wood soffits that bring the wood details from the inside uh to the outside. You're also seeing uh some brick varieties of brick texture, so that brick material will be used in a sort of corbling. That accentuates horizontality as well as the regular Norman bonding of the of the wall here. Slide fifty seven is on that terrace outside of the winter garden, looking over the cloister garden. Uh to goheen walk and the buildings beyond. Again, you see the brick texture and the landing of the stairs and the accessible ramp uh in the foreground here. Now we're in slide fifty eight, we're down in that cloister garden. There's a sort of pre event uh function space here that lets out into the garden. So this is a sort of gathering space when there are events in the pavilion or just on any any day. One of the beautiful things about the existing Masha McCash infirmary is that it has a beautiful garden. That allows this kind of uh intimate space for people to visit. And this will be a a similar space, uh south facing for daylight and sunlight. And a kind of more meandering pathway. It's really not going anywhere other than providing places for people to sit, relax and enjoy the the kind of garden. Looking back up to the uh the winter garden. Uh an aerial view of some of that same situation. You'll see a lot of the wood detailing from the uh pavilion here and around that uh pre event function space. And then slide sixty is probably the best view of the uh looking through the winter garden, that two story space that I mentioned. Uh that winter garden has triple glazing on the south side of it, a single layer of glass between it and the lobby. So it sort of serves as a sort of thermal buffer between the outside environment and the interior environment. And it has both the overhang and the aluminum screen that I talked about to control the sunlight. Moving further to the west, uh now we're looking at the southwest corner of the building. The uh the sort of event pavilion and a nice terrace garden outside of it. You'll see the accessible ramp system which comes around here and brings you to the south entrance and then goheen walk on the right. And then again, closer in toward that event pavilion, you'll see the wood detailing, the mass timber construction of the structure of the structural column through here. Um and uh cast concrete wall, which is the sort of foundation for for this part of the building. Coming uh along that accessible ramp, um which which uh sort of comes around this tree in order in order to get the length of it. And then enters into the building through here, joined with a set of stairs, looking over that um that terrace on the west side of the pavilion. Slide sixty four, now we've moved to the inside. We're looking at that south wall of of Eno uh at the main sitting area in the atrium lobby. Uh as we said, this will be a a beautiful garden to the west, um both when this building is done and then in the future when Hudson College comes on board. You'll see you're seeing some of the pattern of the screening on on that uh western facing glass. And you're seeing the sort of light touch as the building connects to Eno and the primary circulating stair. Up to the counseling and psychological services. We're looking at that wing right there. Here we are uh on the next slide. This would be slide sixty five. We're looking to the south uh through the um. Winter garden out to the landscape and you're getting a good sense of the uh natural wood quality, the warmth of natural wood. Which is a strong, strong element throughout the spaces of of the building. And then we're in the on six side sixty eight now, we're in the uh pavilion space. This will be a uh as I said, a space that could be programmed for health and wellness events. It has a dividing wall that can subdivide the space. It has the the warmth of the natural wood uh structural system and a wood wood soft it. You'll see seating fans in this space or seating fans throughout the building, which further reduce the energy demands on the building. Now on slide sixty seven, uh we're looking at. Sixty seven, now we're looking at uh the signage and wayfinding. We mentioned that there is a variance again for the number of entrances that will need. Uh donor names and building names. We've requested that variance, the signage will still be, is still under design. Slide sixty nine is a transition slide to sustainability. Uh and I just want to end then on slide sixty nine. With a bit of a description of the variety of sustainability features. Um as a building in health and wellness, we've really prioritized. Uh a whole suite of sustainability strategies. Uh first of all, the building will be heated and cooled by the new uh hot water to exchange system, which is being implemented on campus. Uh will use radiant heating and cooling throughout the building. Uh which gives a sort of consistent uh and a sort of pleasant temperature range in response quickly to specific needs. That's combined with this sort of fourth bullet over here, which is the dedicated outdoor air system or DOAS system. It provides a like a highly filtered outdoor air, so that there's an excellent quality of air throughout the building. Minimizing um ventilated air by by these systems uh is a is a very healthy way of handling a building. Uh for a health services facility. I mentioned the ceiling fans that support all of that and further reduce the energy loads. Operable windows which are triple glazed. Uh you see the bullet on the right here. So the high performance glazing system and a high performance envelope system. Shoulders shoulder shading and passive design strategies reduce heat gain on the building. The green roof provides extra insulation, uh supports that biophilic design principle and gives a green roof to be looked out upon. Stormwater retention, we've we've talked about exterior wall construction, I mentioned is the high performance exterior wall. And the mass timber framing, which reduces the embodied carbon of the building. And also provides the benefits of the the sort of warmth and healthy environment and the messaging of a of a health services facility. And now I'm on slide seventy and that's the end of our presentation. So I'm gonna stop it there and we can go to any of the slides for questions uh that anyone would would have.
Thank you, Mr. La Place. You're on mute.
All right. Thank you very much. Um Ron, could you put up a slide that shows the um relationship of the atrium to Eno Hall? Doesn't really matter which one. I just had a question.
Surely get there. You're talking about the interior relationship or the exterior?
Exterior, I think might might be.
Hold on. Hold on, not there yet. Let me go step. This one I think is the best.
Okay, good. Uh thanks. Um my question is, you'd mentioned that um. You you called that where the atrium comes into Eno Hall as a light touch. But I was wondering, does it? What's the necessity of having it overlap onto the roof of Eno? Um was there consideration to have the atrium space stop? On the um southerly plane of, you know, the elevation of Eno instead of overhanging it. And you've got that really heavy like cornice, or I don't know what to call it, but it's very dark above the gla- above the glazing. Which is just gonna draw the eye to this overlap. I was wondering if you could talk about that a little bit. Maybe the light touch could be a little lighter. I don't know.
Well, we we did look at it and we thought that it was uh a kind of awkward relationship and that the gap in the glass above Eno is much more open with more light in this in this way. What this does is that for me, particularly from the interior, you have to keep in mind that um. Only in this presentation, and if you're in a drone, are you gonna see this view from the inside. Having the uh ceiling plane go beyond the the roof, the the wall plane of the south side of of Eno. Gives more breathing room to the south side of you know, that would have stopped short. It would have been a complicated and probably a clumsy uh a way to resolve that that relationship. Uh the depth of the the depth of this of the uh of the sort of slab over there is. You know, there's something that haunts architects all the time, but that's that's the depth you get when you have um s- uh structure and systems. Uh and insulation in a in a in a ceiling package with long spans.
Right. And I and I'm assuming that if you're on the diagonal walk or somewhere north of um Eno Hall. Since this is set back quite a bit from the front or the northerly elevation of Eno Hall, you may not see this rise above that. Is that correct?
Right, we've we didn't. Yeah, goo- good point. We we have studied those views and it's 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 quite well back and barely noticeable.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh from the reports, I think I understand that a lot of what we're seeing as white roof here will be covered with uh solar panels. Is that correct?
Good, good point. The building is designed to be solar ready. Uh structurally um on the on the addition, uh not on Eno, but on the additions designed to be solar ready. The structural conditions of Eno did not allow that. Um and we, I think folks know that we um implement solar panels through power purchase agreements. And we have, we would have to then, we would enter into uh an RFP process for a a power purchase agreement partner. For our next generation of uh of solar energy. And this would be a candidate for that uh for that system. We expect, we expect every one of our buildings that have flat roofs to be part of our 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 solar energy system as we go forward.
Okay. Um other questions for?
Yeah.
The experts, Mr. Xarni?
Yeah, so I'm just curious. I mean, I I'm glad to see that um you are looking to go for lead gold. But I was just curious why um not go for platinum or potentially some other rigorous um standards like living building. Um or um the well building institute. It seems like well, well building standard would be uh appropriate for a health center. Or health open. Um and then also um the the P C memo mentioned uh carbon smart material palettes. Or A I's healthier material protocol. And so I was just curious why uh not do any of those.
We are um. Ambitiously, aspirationally uh studying the possibility to get to lead platinum. Uh we can, we can say with confidence that we'll get to lead gold, but we're still looking at um our lead scorecard to see if we can get to lead to lead platinum. We've looked at all the all the standards uh that that you mentioned. Um and we are um. You know, we've we've even considered, well, there are some some prerequisites that require uh campus wide changes. Um but I think that um we are, we're trying to be as as thoughtful as we can on each individual project. But we have to keep in mind that we are also looking at every project as part of a campus system. So with uh the current generation of solar panels, we're providing twenty percent of our electric electricity on campus. We're transferring the entire campus to a G exchange hot water system, which is the most energy efficient efficient system for heating and cooling facilities. So we we look at and we have a and we're pursuing our goal to be carbon neutral by twenty forty six. So we have, we have a lot of systems that uh we don't have to play all our cards on each individual building as long as we're watching the big picture.
Alright, thanks.
I appreciated the um he- hearing about all of the air quality um measures that you're taking. Ms. Sax, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah, I had two questions. Um one, I'm imagining that if um there's a student who's particularly unwell. There would might be a need to transport them from this facility to our hospital on the other side of Route One. Um and is there um, I didn't see what the connections were, but I I'm I'm sure you must have given some thought to this, but I was just curious to. To know how that would work.
Yes, um I can pull up a slide if you want, but I can probably easily just talk through it.
Yeah, that's fine.
On 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 average, we have about um just like slightly less than two events per week. Where there is a transfer of a of a that requires an ambulance to come to the facility. So at the southeast corner of the facility, uh right off a goheen walk, there's a parking place for an ambulance, which is immediately adjacent. To a a ramp that goes down to the lower level uh to the outpatient area of the uh facility. And then there are elevators that connect up to the infirmary and throughout throughout the building. So um that's a uh that's a, you know, one of the earliest priorities of the of the facility is to design that route of travel and service to the ambulances.
And and Ron, she she was asking about service from the facility to the hospital. So it would take the same route, correct? That you would use the ambulance there, travel Washington Road and then down to Route One and then to the hospital.
Um I assume, I I I actually honestly don't know what the preferred route of the of the hospital traffic of the of the vehicles are, but it would follow the same route it follows today.
Yeah, it it doesn't matter so much what the route is. I just was wondering, you know, how that would work transferring the student from the building to the hospital.
Right.
Thanks. Um the other question I had was, could you go back to the slide with um in which sprab had recommended? Um a lighting change?
Yes, just give me a second. This. Can you see this?
Yeah. So it and what was the rationale for that request?
Um they simply wanted us to see if we could uh minimize uh some of the decorative lighting and reduce any uplighting. So um we we said we we do our best and we've we've sort of reduced uh some of the uplights that we had previously designed in the cloister. Now we have ballard lighting with full cutoff that do not have any uplight component throughout the cloister.
Um and is that a path, a a walkway where people are, students are walking through?
All this, the security stuff. That that those are pathways. Those are just 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 walking pathways through a contemplative garden.
So what would be the impact? Uh of the the person walking through of of the diminished lighting? Would they then not to be not be able to see?
No, 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 we, yeah, good point. We we would not go uh. It's the same amount of lighting. It's just achieved with a different type of fixture. So the the amount of the amount of foot candles on the ground, uh we have not diminished. So we've not, we've not diminished the safety and security of the space. But we've turned it with a different type of fixture rather than having any uplight component. It's all a full cutoff ballard fixture.
I see. Okay, great. Those are my only questions.
Okay.
That's good. That's like a good change. Um other other questions? I have um um Mr. Purcell, please go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, um I think Jerry has to swear me in for this.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth.
I do. Um. Uh before you go much further, um I would like to point out that we reviewed this back in August. And there are significant number of comments on the stormwater management from our consultant, Joe Scoopian, who's here this evening. I would like to have the board hear what is remaining from it because we have worked closely with. The university's engineering team to resolve many of those comments. And just so before we get to a point where we're running through a memo that has seven or eight comments in it, there aren't that many left. So I would like to hear from Mr. Scoopian as to what remaining concerns there are about stormwater.
Great. That's that's great. And while you're talking about stormwater, um I I would like for someone to address the question of. Whether you considered um using more of the garden space than it looks like you did for um. You know, to capture uh stormwater. Um or or whether I might be misreading it. I mean, it it looked, it looked as if there was more opportunity. For 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 soaking water in and um, you know, whether it's the cloister garden or or the one, you know. On the northwest. Side of the building. Um so um but let's, i- is Mr. Scoopian? Yeah, I see his. Um square. Uh Joe, maybe you can, yeah.
Okay. Although.
Joe. Need to be sworn in, Joe.
Yes. If you could raise your right hand. Yes. You swear or affirm that the testimony might you were about to give will be the truth. I do. So it's one of them, please uh state your full name, spell your last name. Uh Joseph J. Scoopian, last name is S K U P as in Princeton, I E N. I've been waiting all night to say that. Uh in fact, I've been waiting a lot of.
In fact, I've been waiting a lot of nights to say that. No. I would like to hear the answer to your question first, before we get into the details of the review.
Okay, so Chris, could you respond to the question that Louise has posed?
Sure. So this, it was a question of balancing the landscape and the stormwater and trying to achieve a lot of the project components. So we did try to, to provide as many opportunities as possible. And particularly with like training sidewalks across planted areas. We should also note we did, the project does include improved soil profiles through all those areas. So there's a very, a very deep soil profile where we just, we're pulling out existing poorly or west well draining soils and putting in soils that really produce, that really support plant health, but also provide there's less compaction within the soils. There's lots more opportunities to soak up water and to, to pull that in as part of the infiltration. We didn't take credit for a lot of those things because it's, it's hard to model. But we did, it was important for us to include those things in there as part of the design. And then we tried to use, what we, what to do is utilize poem party because it's a little bit better in terms of opportunities to infiltrate. It's a broader flatter area that allows us to, to put in some retention in the area that's also used as athletic field. So it's, it's open and it's not planted. So it, it really fits in. We're looking at it on a kind of campus level. It was a better opportunity to really achieve the same goals, provide the water quality at the site, provide additional detention downstream. But try to work it into the whole, the overall campus design and combine that with the other, the adjacent sites to, to take advantage of that opportunity of that area.
So when you, when you talk about overflow, how much does it have to rain before you need overflow? Is that, is that a question? I mean, I know it's, it's got to depend on all sorts of factors, but but could you, could you speak to that?
So it's going to depend on the areas. So most, so the overflow really relates back to poem party. We will, that's where truly there's, is, is a volume below the outlet. So that's the system that overflows.
Right.
In terms of the site, we're trying to, it, it's less of an overflow. It's more just how much water can the ground take in areas where we're able to direct rain to the soil landscape areas? The pavement, the direct pavement will, which is just the, the existing loading area. That area does go, there's no overflow there that goes directly to a catch basin and the water quality treatment device and then continues down as, as it, as it drains now to the south.
I'm sorry, what, what goes directly there and doesn't get?
So the southeast corner of the site, where the existing loading area is that gets, gets routed through the water quality and then drains south.
But the roofs and the roofs and the walkways and such typically drain to vegetated areas, whether they are considered BMPs or not?
So the, the roof is, is internally collected. So that's in a dump, that's, that's hard piped through the water quality system in, into the pipe system. It's the areas.
Everything from the roof goes straight to Poe Field, you're saying?
Pretty much there's green roof areas that will, will collect some, but the rest of the roof areas will go, go get treated, get, but get hard piped to the Pope party system.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, I think, I think in general, I'm, I'm sure you've, or maybe you've heard us say this before. We, we would prefer that more water get absorbed on site. And that, you know, the runoff from roofs and such don't go straight to a great big centralized underground system that takes runoff from all over the place. So, so that's why I thought when you talked about it for overflow, that it was genuinely overflow. But what I'm hearing is that it's not, it, it's for overflow, but it's also for a substantial amount of the stormwater that's generated with any significant rainfall. It's going to go straight into, straight through a manufactured treatment device and through pipes to under Poe Field, where we hope it will infiltrate under the open system. But still, it's not, it's not treated on site.
Well, everything's treated on site, but it's not necessarily infiltrated on site. In, by, in site being immediately right on the building property, the building site.
Turn it over to you, Mr. Scoopian.
Okay. Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad that they had the opportunity to address that. First off, let's get to the regulations and the stormwater rules. There, because of the lack of motor vehicle surfaces at the site, there's no buyer, buyer stormwater management ordinance. There's no water quality required to be provided. However, as you heard, they are providing manufactured treatment device before the water goes to the subsurface basin down at the fields. There's also some bio retention bases. Let's say small scale bio retention basis. They are not sized to treat up to and including the, the water quality storm that they would normally be designed to if they were required. So you can look at this as either half full or half empty. I like to look at it as half full. They don't have to do any water quality treatment. However, they are doing a green, a small green roof. They are doing some small bio retention. And while that may not be providing all of the water quality that a parking lot might require, they are providing some water quality treatment and the possibility, and I'll leave it at that, of, of infiltration and recharge. The soils are out here and they've done, again, a, a very good job. And I'm not trying to be complimentary. I'm trying to state the facts. They've done, again, a very good job, a very thorough job of soil analysis, both, both permeability, texture, groundwater levels. And, and again, I'm very similar to the rest of the campus. There's not a lot of opportunity for recharge here. The soils just won't allow it. It's a very disturbed soil profile. But they are providing wherever they can. And I have to say also, it's a tight site. We, we're not out, you know, between Eno Hall and Guyo Hall and, and all, it's, I could show you a, a, you know, a Google Maps aerial photo. But it's a tight site. There's not a lot of vegetation to deal with, to send water on to. Okay, so as far as recharge goes, it's not required since there is no real recharge happening now on a technical level. Well, they are going to try to achieve what they can. There's no water quality required because there's frankly no motor vehicle surfaces, which again is an indication of just how tight the site is. So there's no water quality. They are providing bio retention, small scale for small storms as well as the green roof. And what I was happy to see was by the manufactured treatment device, not a very exotic one, but since the runoff is going and it's primarily roof runoff, sidewalk runoff, but it is going to an underground facility, which is more difficult to maintain obviously than a, a surface facility. And so whatever we can capture almost as a, not, so not so much pre-treatment, but just to capture this, some of the material that may wind up in the underground pipes, you know, in a, in a facility, it's a lot easier to clean, a lot easier to inspect. So that, that was good thinking there. Quantity control is fine as far as meeting the, the township's requirements. Jim is right. There are a number of technical questions regarding the design that I'd be glad to go into, you know me, but I won't, you know, they're all detailed in my report to Jim. But there are technical issues. They're not unresolvable. They're just, gee, this number here doesn't agree with that number there. Or you're making, you know, you're, you're designing this for a certain drainage area or a few, a future amount of impervious. We don't know what that is. And I believe that may be the result of having multiple firms designing the stormwater, both the site and the stormwater between VHB and also between niche. And it's, it's, it's nothing, nothing major. I just want to point it out because Jim wanted me to go through my memo. So the majority of the comments I have are, are technical in nature. Either correcting a number, making numbers agree, or providing further information to, to make sure that what they're proposing is, is approvable. Now, the only other thing that's outstanding, and I, I'm glad Jim asked me to talk because that, this is a problem. We talked about it briefly on 10 acre, but this is a little bit more complicated. Your stormwater control ordinance, which has, which has been, let's say, directed by, guided by the state stormwater management rules, requires that green infrastructure be used for water quality, groundwater recharge and water quantity control. Now for recharge and quality, it needs to be small scale green infrastructure, as we talked about at, at the 10 acre site, which they just weren't able to use. But fortunately, they happen to have a 15 or 10 year old bio retention basin that we could use as the mitigation. Here, they don't have to do small scale green infrastructure because they don't have to do quality. They don't have to do recharge. And, and while the bio retention basin that they're providing and the green roof that they're providing are technically small scale green infrastructure, they don't meet the, the technical standards in terms of the size of the storm they can control. But that's a detail. Here's the important thing. The rule, the ordinance go, coming from the rules requires that quantity be done with green infrastructure, not small scale, but green infrastructure, a wetland, a wet pond, a larger scale infiltration basin, which now that I have an opportunity and I won't take much longer, doesn't make a lot of sense in terms of, I'm not that I'm anti-green infrastructure, but why green infrastructure is needed to control the runoff from a large scale event, an infrequent again, a 10, a 50, 100 year event. And I know, yeah, they happen every year. But here's where we're, we're kind of caught. They cannot do their quantity control with a green infrastructure BMP, mainly a wetland, a wet pond, simply because there's no room to do it. What they are doing is they're provide, they're meeting the, the technical requirements for quantity control. But they're doing it subsurface detention, which is effectively meeting the quantity control requirements. It's just not doing it in a green infrastructure way. And frankly, I don't know how, I agree with, with Mark and a lot of the discussions that we've had. I don't know how it can be done other than to take the underground facility down at, at the field, at the, at the playing field and make it an open basin, make it an open wetland, make it an open wet pond. And I just don't think that's, I agree with Mark. I don't, I just don't think that's appropriate to be used at that site. So here's the issue. They need to now mitigate, not for water quality, they are able to do that. What they need to do is mitigate for not doing water quality with a green infrastructure BMP. Okay. And that is a bit of a puzzle right now because I can't seem to get a straight answer from the, from DEP as to what that mitigation has to be. The rules are not, the rules are confusing. They're not very clear or not very thorough. And that, that, that part of the rule has been carried over to your ordinance, no fault of yours. But it's, there's not a lot of clear guidance in both the stormwater management rules and the ordinance as to, if you cannot do quantity control, large storm control, 10, 50, 100 year flood control in a green infrastructure BMP, what is the mitigation that's required? Now, if you can't do recharge, if you can't do quality, it's very clear. You have to provide that another location in a green infrastructure BMP that provides quantity, quality, excuse me, or recharge. When it gets to quantity, there, the rules go silent as to what exactly has to be provided. If you read the rules literally, then the mitigation measure has to only provide treatment of the water quality storm, which to, to the engineer brain goes, wait a minute, they're not doing quantity control. So we need to mitigate it by providing water quality control, but literally that's what the rules say. So anyway, to get to, to get to the end of the long discussion, the only problem I see that, that needs to be resolved is that they need to do mitigation for not providing quantity control with a green infrastructure BMP. And I'm sure that can be done. The only outstanding question now is what does that offsite or mitigation green infrastructure BMP? What storm does that need to be designed for? Does it need to be designed for the 100 year storm, which I don't believe so? But it needs to be designed to some level, some storm, and we need to give them direction. So I'm working with DEP and some other folks I deal with to try to get an answer. I have asked the question. I've just not gotten any answers. And I think that's because, again, I'll be frank. I think that's because of a lack of foresight in writing the mitigation measures. They were think, they, they, I don't think they frankly, I frankly don't think they thought, gee, how do we mitigate if we don't do quantity, big floodstorm mitigation with green infrastructure? How do we mitigate for that?
Well, the rules do require that all municipalities have stormwater mitigations plans, which many municipalities, including Princeton, do not have. And, and we are, we are, we're working on that.
Yes, we, I, I already talked to, already talked to Jim in Indiana. Now, the, the, the organ, so it's clear. And I think that I have to compliment DEP this time around. The original rule said, oh, you have to have a mitigation plan. Well, frankly, they didn't realize that there's not a lot of towns that are going to sit around with all the spare time and money they have and staff to develop alternative stormwater management measures throughout their municipality in case somebody can't do something on their site. So what Princeton has done in most municipalities since the original rules in 2004 is to say, look, we're ready to do a mitigation plan when it's needed. Applicant, if you cannot do, meet all the requirements onsite and need to do mitigation, then we will work with you to develop a specific plan for your site. Now, the new rules that came out last year and your ordinance allow that, that a mitigation, municipality does not have to have a specific mitigation plan. That mitigation plan can be developed as the need for mitigation arises, which I think is a a better use of your resources and time and staff. However, it is a good idea that Princeton has, has standards and guidelines for how that mitigation measure is to be designed. So if we had that tonight at the planning board meeting, we could say, okay, university, you need to mitigate for this. Here's what the mitigation plan requires. But we're right now, we're in that gray area of new rules being written and promulgated, but yet not put in the ground. So we're, we're finding our way. I'm sure there's a solution to this. I just don't have it for you tonight.
I guess I would pose a question then, and I see your hand, Mia. To Mr. McCoy, or whoever is the appropriate person, has the university looked at sites around campus where a a green infrastructure installation might serve this purpose? I mean, I know you've got some pretty big scale ones down at Lakeside and if there's any number of places on campus. And I'm just wondering if you, if you've looked, you know, in your systems planning at locations for the kind of larger scale green infrastructure installation Mr. Scoopian was referring to?
I would have to ask Mark Gabriel to see if he's.
Mr. McCoy, because we have discussed it. Jim and I, and Mr. McCoy, Kristen, applicant, and I believe the new director of facilities at university. We had a meeting talking about what's, what's coming down, what's, what's in, what does the university have in mind for future development? How can we integrate that stormwater design? How can we have one project help another or think more globally or regionally than just project by project by project? And at that meeting, we, Jim and I brought up this need specifically at the health services building for mitigation. And then we discussed this, the, the concept at least of, for instance, tonight, they are providing bio retention. Now, it's not full water quality storm level bio retention, but it's some degree of bio retention. They are providing some degree of infiltration. They're, they're providing a small green roof. And they've done that on many of their projects. And so what we, what we. And so what we, what we touched on, we didn't get into details. But is there a possibility of, of sitting down and coming up with a university mitigation plan that would draw upon all these extra efforts that they do? Okay, that are not needed at a site, but they're providing anyway. They may not be a full design level, but can we somehow take their good intentions and their good efforts? And, and.
Credit for those little sponges.
Exactly, exactly. Line that into a mitigation plan. Now, we'd have to come up with an accounting system. We'd have to come up with it, you know, how do we measure how much each little small effort adds to the total? But we also need to know what the total needs to be, and that's what we're still working with DEP on.
Right.
Ms. Sax. I would, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jim.
I'm sorry, I forgot that, yeah, or go ahead, Ms. Sax.
Oh, did you go ahead if you wanted to?
No, I, well, I just wanted to, I'm kind of double down on what Joe said. And you just heard Mr. Lovett testify that they are providing um, soil remediation that's going to contribute to this. That is very hard to quantify. But if we could find some way to quantify that, those, those can be added up together to provide this mitigation that's necessary. And, and as Mr. Scoopian said, we have had a meeting. We have discussed the, the holistic approach of stormwater management on the university. And uh, we're, we're moving in the right direction. And as soon as we can get the DEP to say, and I think Joe, I think we, we, we've had sort of an answer and you, you, you broached it was that we need to provide um, green infrastructure for the water quality design storm, even though it's for the quantity. And, and it's possible that they've actually got it on this site, but can't quantify it because all these small things are difficult to quantify. But we'll, we'll continue to work with the university, particularly on this site and on the overall holistic approach to make sure that all the regulations are met.
Okay. Mia?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Scoopian for going into all of that detail. Um, and I.
It comes natural, sorry.
Yeah, well, for those of us who are, who are not stormwater experts, um, it, it is, your explanation was really helpful even for a layperson. But I also just want to take this opportunity to make the point that I think people know that um, the municipality has been working on a, a redevelopment stormwater ordinance, which would go beyond obviously uh, certain state standards. Um, and it has been held up because there were a number of council members, myself included, who felt very strongly that before we introduce that ordinance, it needs to be paired with a mitigation plan. So I strongly support the idea of a mitigation plan. I know that some of our staff feel like it would take too long to come up with a full mitigation plan, but I will just say that some of us feel like we don't want to let perfection be the enemy of the good. And that just this sort of approach that you've mentioned in this context of finding some projects is what we have in mind. Um, but to have um, uh, to put in place an ordinance with no ability for mitigation other than onsite, um, I think some of us felt was short sighted. And this, this uh, example was a, a great um, example of, of why we feel strongly about holding off on our ordinance until we have some sort of uh, ability to, to provide mitigation opportunities. So just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, Mr. Muller?
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of questions. Let me see if I understand this and I like to try to, to craft some conditions which would apply here. So I take it in terms of stormwater quality and recharge, no issue, because no motor vehicle pavement i- is in the sub area, uh, in the area of the site. But they have not provided the large scale uh, green infrastructure BMP for the water quantity. Now, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm agreeing.
Okay, um, now, do they need a variance from that then? From the, from the requirement in the ordinance?
I will leave that up to the, the attorneys. Um, the, you know, when we, when I hear the word variance, it, it becomes a technical, a legal technical term that a stormwater people, us engineers aren't, aren't familiar with. So I don't know, but the, the, put it this way, the, the stormwater control ordinance allows through the state stormwater management rules and the municipality's general stormwater discharge permit, it does allow for non-comp, non, not fully complying and providing mitigation as a, as a condition of approval. Now, whether that becomes a variance, a waiver, I'll leave that to the.
Okay, so.
Jerry, Jerry, if I may, um, I don't believe, I don't believe that the ordinance or the regulations allows us to give a variance for the mitigation. Okay. It allows us to give a variance for not being able to meet the requirements, but the mitigation is something that's built in.
Okay.
We can give a variance for them not giving, getting recharge if, if that was required or not getting water qual, quality if it was required, or even not getting the quantity if it's required, but they still must provide mitigation.
Okay, so.
We can't give a variance for mitigation.
That, that's fine. And let me.
That's my understanding anyway.
Okay, let me throw out two, two, two conditions. And, and, and Joe, I haven't seen your report and Jim, maybe if you can get me a copy, it wasn't posted um, and, or distributed. But in any event, one would be the technical, that, that the technical design issues, which are not yet resolved, should be resolved to, to your satisfaction as a result of, of um, interaction between you and uni- university engineers, correct? Does that sound fine?
Yes.
Okay.
And so does that, I'm sorry, I'm just interrupting. Does, does that mean that you, Jim, um, working with Joe and maybe others will decide and specify where and how the mitigation?
No, I haven't, I haven't gotten to that yet because I, as I understood what, what Joe had said early on.
Technical details is what he's talking about.
Technical detail.
Okay.
And then a second, second condition goes to mitigation. I mean, one of them says that basically the university will work with Joe and Jim in formulating a mi- mitigation plan acceptable to them. Is that too broad and too ambitious? I mean, that makes sense.
It's, it's okay with me.
Yeah.
And Joe?
Uh, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I don't know about Mark and, and, and all, but yeah, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay, and that, and then that avoids obviously this whole variance question, which I started with anyway. Okay.
Right.
That sounds fine to me. Maybe the university, if um, they have a different point of view, they could jump in.
Looks like they agree.
Okay.
I, I think that makes sense.
I, I would.
Yep.
And if. No variance or deviation, so.
I'm gonna work with you to make sure we meet that, you meet the regulations.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And, and to help, and to maybe make the, the wonderful job of writing the conditions a little bit easier, my comments are in a, a letter to Jim of August 11th, 2021. So if that'll help cover that part of the, the, the conditions.
Okay, that'd be great. Now, if I could get a copy of that, that would.
Yeah.
Maybe Carrie.
Certainly.
Carrie?
I, I don't think I've seen a copy. I'm not sure if that's floating around. Or was it in, in, in any part of your report, Jim? I, I don't recall.
It may have been my comments, Jim, you can help me here. It may have been folded into the staff's report to the.
I don't, I, no, it, it, it was not in my report because my report actually preceded your, our receipt of your report.
Okay, I can provide that to everyone.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I can take care of it too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd love to make sure that it gets to everyone.
Wait, does this mean we're going to get two copies of it, one from Jim and one from Joe?
And we'll, we'll, we'll coordinate it. I'll, I'll handle it.
So I have just a quick question for, for Joe. Joe, um, were those two conditions that outlined by Jerry cover everything in your report because we're going to go through the mitigation? We're going to go through um, the technical details?
Yeah.
Cover it, right?
This report that I, that I just described has a total of eight comments. Um, seven of them um, are technical in nature. Or let's say the first six are technical in nature. Number seven is we haven't reviewed the ONM manual because we don't want to do that until the details of what needs to be O and M'd are finalized. And in comment eight is the need for the mitigation.
Okay.
So that, yeah, my, my report would cover all my comments.
Yeah.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Well, one more, what I hope is a really quick question related to stormwater. Did you consider using permeable pavement for any of the pathways and other, you know, walkway areas around the site? Or even the patios, various uh, gathering places?
Mark, can you answer that? I think we, we addressed this in the, our meeting with Sbrab that the, the.
To do with the soil, underlying soils, Ron. So we, we did look at it and it was something we looked at as part of the landscape design as well. We looked at the materials, but given the underlying soils and um, what we need to put it under, it wouldn't be able to drain, wouldn't drain well. So it would, it would be underdrained and wouldn't really effectively um, meet the goals.
I saw that in both the Sbrab memo and the PEC memo, so I wanted to ask on the record.
If I, and I don't want to, I don't want to delay the meeting any longer, but just so I can add to that thought, just in general, permeable paving, uh, it, it's an amazing thing and we've gotten a lot better in terms of constructing it because it wasn't the easiest material to work with. Permeable paving is a conduit. It transmits the runoff to the soil underneath. It does not infiltrate the runoff. It just delivers the runoff from the surface to the subsoil. What achieves the reduction in runoff volume through infiltration is the subsoil. And you could do that in a lot of ways besides permeable paving. Permeable paving happens to be a convenient one. But un- unless you have, as Mr. Lovett pointed out, unless you have the soils, the permeability of the soils, the structure of the soils, the groundwater levels that are needed, the permeable paving is, is like, you know, putting a bed sheet over a parking lot. It's, you know, the, the bed sheet's going to get wet, but if the water's certainly not going to soak any further than the bottom of the sheet, it'll hit. So that, that's why the, that's why it really not a practical idea here.
Well, my understanding is that it can treat for water quality and you can use an underdrain where necessary. I mean, it, it slows it down at least, and so you can address some of the peak, whatever. I, I'm not trying to second guess.
It, it is a good point. Every little bit helps and we understand. And part of what we're doing is pitch, is pitching those sidewalks. So they do get into the, the uh, landscaped areas and have more.
Right, and those new structured soils are, are gonna drink a lot of water.
Will help with that, right.
And, and the vegetation in them, yeah.
And you are correct in that DEP has decided that the permeable paving itself provides 80% TSS removal. Uh, I, I can't say I agree with that, but that's what, that's what the BMP manual allows. And so as we pass this water through the paving, okay? It will remove, they feel enough particulate matter to take 80% on an annual basis out. And you mentioned the key now, once it gets to the paving, where does it go? Well, we need to put it, an underdrain now. So the paving acts like a filter, filters the runoff. And now we need to pick that runoff as it comes out from under the paving, pick it up and, and pipe it away to, to a quantity or whatever facility. In this instance here, again, remember, A, there's no quality requirement. And the only surface that would be permeable paved would be walkways, which aren't a typical source of petroleum hydrocarbons and the other pollutants that we use TSS as a surrogate for.
Fair enough. Okay.
Quiet.
Me too. Um, are there other questions from board members? Um, for any of the experts before, or from staff, any, any other comments before we go to public comment? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. Uh, then with that, I will, excuse me?
I just, just wanted to ask Ron a question.
Please go right ahead, Jerry.
Or, or Christopher. Um, obviously we talked a while ago, you know, the last hearing um, about uh, variances for signage. We looking for the same variances, unspecified number of signs, dimensions specified as well?
We outlined 11, Ron, in this case?
That's right, that's right, we did.
Yeah, we did pick out specific locations and identified 11 locations.
Okay, so it would just be for a number um, of signs and was it just the dimensions?
So the size and degree, uh, design would, would be to um, I guess, um, Derek for, so um, for him to review administratively.
Good, thanks.
Madam Chair, I hate to prolong this, but um, I, we did not discuss traffic. Um, I didn't hear much discussion of traffic during the presentation and I would like to ask Dan McGinnis if there are still any concerns regarding any traffic issues that may um, have arisen in his review from McMinn.
McGinnis, have you, have you been sworn?
No, I don't wish so.
Mr. Muller?
If you could write, Dan, if you, um, do you swear? Um, or affirm the testimony about to give you the truth?
I do.
So that's one or two.
Thanks and thank you, Jim. Yeah, I think a lot of our comments were, were technical, but there, there were a few that are, are worth addressing. One, um, the, with the additional emergency vehicle traffic, um, I would just suggest that the site distance at the intersection of GIO and Washington Road be, be a damn potential condition of approval. Um, certainly there'd be less traffic on the road, but some of that traffic will be emergent in nature, which might exacerbate the side distance problem if, if there is one there. Um, and then the other issue I'd, I'd like to hear addressed potentially is the pedestrian circulation along the east side of GIO as it goes down to the 90 degree bend in the road seems to terminate it in a parking lane. And so I'd be curious if uh, that circulation could be improved as part of this project, if not some, some future improvement along that route.
And I, I'm sorry, in terms of the site distance, what intersection, what intersection was that?
GIO and Washington.
Okay, thank you.
Those are the, the, the significant comments from, from our review.
Uh, Mr. McCoy, do you want, or, or Mr. Degracia, do you want Mr. uh, Jacques Marre to address those questions or will somebody else?
On, should we go to George or do you want to?
Let's, let's have George address those.
Uh, good evening. I guess I have to be sworn in.
Uh, you've already been sworn in, I believe.
Yes, oh, okay.
Just, it was hours ago.
Yes, it was another project.
It was on, it was on this project as well.
It was, it was this project.
Um, I, I think the site distance uh, can be checked, so we.
George, before you go, we do have to have you qualify. Can you just briefly tell us your credentials? Sorry, just one minute.
Okay, um, I have an engineering degree from Switzerland and a master's in urban planning from Stanford University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and two other states. I have testified in front of this board and the previous regional planning board for many, many years.
Thank you.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, uh, yes, we can check the site distance at the intersection of GIO and Washington to make sure that it is adequate. And if there's anything that can be mitigated, that could be done. Um, on, on the uh, that 90 degree turn and the transition from um, the sidewalk to a, a driveway condition, I think that it's not part of this project at this stage. And I would say uh, it's something that uh, can be addressed as part of, you know, maybe the next project of Schmitt Hall, I don't know. Uh, I think it's more question at the rates to the university. Ron, I don't know if you could answer that?
Yes, that is a, a condition that we got, getting back to the question that Michael Aplace asked about the diagonal walk, um, which will continue down to Poe Field. We uh, will address that in, as part of that project.
Okay.
And Ron, what project is that again that you, you're addressing?
Well, we, we, we uh, call it the diagonal walk project. But basically it is, is referenced from the Capitol, cap, cap, Capitol. Well, we, we, we call it the diagonal walk project, but basically it is, is referenced from the Capitol, cap, cap, campus plan, twenty twenty-six campus plan, it's to create a more pedestrian friendly walkway. Um, all the way from, you know, north east of the art museum, all, all the way down to Poe Field. So it will go along, uh, the improvements will go along the east side of, uh, the U H S building. And then they will cross Goheen and, uh, where it crosses Goheen, I think is the area that we're, we're talking about. So that Gil Lane will essentially become, the entire road will essentially become a pedestrian walkway. So it'd be less about, uh, the sidewalk and more, more becomes a kind of pedestrian path.
The tooth in the twenty seventeen, uh, report of the plan, it's on page sixty.
Mike, I think we lost you there.
Yeah.
I was just going to say it's on page sixty-one of the twenty seventeen report on campus plan.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. McGinnis, did Mr. Jacques Mar address both of your questions or did you have?
He did, yes. That, that was all I had. The rest were technical and be, can be worked out later.
Okay. All right, thanks for, thanks for raising. Uh, any other things we need to, to cover before going to public comment?
All I had, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Muller, you're on mute. I see you talking. I see your lips moving.
Thank you. Um, Dan, so the technical issues in addition to the two issues that you pointed out, should, should I just phrase the condition as technical issues set forth in the, um, report to be addressed by the university and, and basically worked out with you to your satisfaction?
Certainly, that sounds good.
Okay.
Uh, are folks hankering for a quick break, uh, before we go to public comment? Or do, do we want to soldier on and go straight into it?
Well, before we answer this, I could let you know, we have twenty-eight members of the public in attendance. Uh, no hands have been raised.
Okay, um, I'm sure they will. I'm sure there will be hands that get raised. So what, I, I'm going to call for like a five-minute break. Um, or, you know, a quick, try to make it five minutes. I know some people prefer ten, but let's just, uh, try to make it closer to five and, uh, it's nine thirty-five, let's be back i- if possible at nine forty and then we'll start public comment, um, promptly. Does that sound good? Okay, thank you. See you soon. Oh, thank you, Carrie. You read my mind. So with that, I'll open the public, uh, uh, comment portion of the meeting. If you are, um, in the attendees room and would like to speak, please, um, virtually raise your hand uh, by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And I see that we have, um, at least one person who would like to speak, Ms. Cherry. Um, Carrie, could you bring over Kip Cherry, please?
I've tried several times already, so sometimes there's a glitch.
Okay. Maybe with the camera rolling again, it'll be easier.
That it's done.
Great. So I'm not seeing any other hands up. If you, uh, just be sure to raise your hand as soon as you um, realize you want to speak, so because get through Ms. Cherry and nobody other, nobody else has their hand raised, we will conclude public comment. Let's see, we have Ms. Cherry with us yet?
I'm right here.
Ah, hi, Kip.
Hi.
If you can raise your right hand.
Yes.
Swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth.
Yes, I do. I have two, uh, two basic questions. Um, one relates to the, uh, treatment unit and what that does in terms of removing salt, uh, or fertilizer or, um, material coming from the garbage container system, uh, as the stormwater is collected. That's one question. And the other one relates to, uh, modeling, uh, big storms. Um, of course, we've got Sandy, Ida and Irene in our, uh, you know, behind us and some similar, uh, storms probably ahead of us. So, um, but even a more moderate storm. Um, and you've been discussing this idea of a retention area for soaking, uh, uh, the stormwater in. I assume all this stormwater ends up, uh, that doesn't soak in at Carnegie Lake and goes on into Millstone. And I'm wondering, uh, whether, uh, you've done any modeling on that in, uh, or have any, uh, estimates? And, um, I, I think that this flooding thing is a huge problem. And while it may not, uh, affect Princeton University, it may affect those downstream, but, um, it, it could be a big issue. So I just wanted to bring those two things up.
Thank you.
So, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mr. Lovett.
Yeah, I, I couldn't start to, to answer this and Mark, I'm sure can help out as well. So, uh, in terms of larger storms, the, the system was looked at for a hundred year storm. And, and we know that those are getting bigger, but for a hundred years.
What does that translate to in terms of inches of rain over twenty-four hours?
It's a twenty-four hour period. Um, Mark, you, could you help me with that? I think it's, uh, approximately eight inches. Uh, was what was modeled. Uh, and, and we do have a substantial decrease, uh, for the hundred-year storm versus existing conditions. Uh, it's approximately eighty percent deep, uh, of, of the storm. So there is a substantial decrease that we're providing with the detention system. So when I just matching peak flows, we're providing a substantial improvement in lowering those. So that, uh, I think that addresses, or at least starts to address, uh, the overall storm and Mark might be able to talk a little bit more. But part of that is the, the work that has been done and Princeton's continually done in working with Mark and his firm on overall campus master planning of the stormwater systems and understanding, understanding that, monitoring it in, in, uh, over time, reducing flows through a number of different projects and providing their own, creating their own, um, requirements.
Something more specific. I mean, we had about three inches per hour in Ida, uh, two inches per hour in Sandy and it's stuck in the same spot for eighteen hours. Uh, and Irene hit Princeton very hard. Uh, so you know, this is real and, uh, it's getting worse all the time. So looking back at the hundred-year flood plane, uh, flood level is not reality. We know that storms are getting worse. So I, I think it's really important to be addressing this in specific numbers.
Yeah. Um, I, I don't, Mark, I'm not sure if you, if you can answer, answer that, um, more specifically. Beyond making sure that we're, we're providing substantial improvements. Yeah.
Um, so yeah, Chris, as you were saying, uh, we do provide that peak rate reduction for the storm events. And in regards to the storms that we're analyzing, uh, what's required is we are analyzing using, um, the NOAA Atlas fourteen, which is, is more current data, uh, that has, um, uh, more information on the current storms that you're talking about and the frequency that those storms are happening. And that, that data is used as, as part of the analysis in the stormwater report. So you can, um, definitely take a peek at, at those rates and, um, the mitigation that the project proposes in that area.
So what you're saying is that you're, that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The treatment for, um, uh, salt, for instance, coming off of the sidewalks. And, uh, you've got this little treatment unit and be interested, you know more about how it works.
Yep. Uh, but Louise, before we go to treatment, did you want to, um, talk a little bit more?
No. Okay. I, I mean, I, I was just, you're, you're, you're reducing the rate of runoff uh, from the existing condition. Is that part of what I heard you say? By eighty, eighty percent, not reducing the overall runoff, but slowing it down and sending it to underground detention where it stays until it's released at a really slow rate so that it doesn't contribute to flooding in Manville? Is that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not testifying for you. I just want to make sure that that is accurate based on what you have said.
That very high level, exactly, what you're saying there, exactly. Yep.
So talk about what the M T Ds do.
Sure, I'm going to let Chris talk about the M T Ds around the facility and what, what's designed there.
Yeah, so, uh, the water quality device focuses on, uh, well, it takes the roof runoff. It, it focuses on the, the loading area is, um, it's, it's main function. In that, well, how that works is it's really a total suspended solid, uh, type of properties where it, it, that's where it's intersecting is the particles and, and some of the salt, not all of it, but some of it connects to the particles. You remove those particles that helps to remove the salt from the system. Uh, the, the sidewalks and other areas, uh, where we're pushing to drain that into the landscape, that will get, uh, this, the salt will, some of the salt will get caught up as it gets filtered through the soils, um, before ultimately through another drain connecting back out to the system. Uh, and then also the, the, um, the recharge area does have a volume or the detention area has a volume below the outlet that will allow against some more infiltration that will give some opportunities there. And, and there's also, uh, Princeton will control with the materials that they use and the level that they, that they solve to, to minimize impacts as well. As part of the maintenance, but.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Cherry. Mr. McCoy, does the university use salt for ice control? Or, or does it use calcium carbonate, something else that's not salt?
I don't think we use salt. We use other, other materials. We have a variety of solutions.
Uh, I'm not seeing any other, any other members of the public with hands raised, so uh, last call. Going once, going twice. Okay, um, I will then conclude the public comment portion of the meeting. Um, are there other, um, questions from board members? For Mr. DeGresia, Mr. McCoy, or any of the expert witnesses? Any discussion? Ms. Capizoli?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, compliment the university on the adaptive reuse of Eno Hall. I feel like it, um, provides a really interesting artistic component to the project and also, um, adaptive reuse is really the most sustainable approach. In a lot of ways, you know, not, uh, disposing of all the brick and material from the original building. So I, I just wanted to say, I, not only do I appreciate it, but the views from those offices on the atrium and the winter garden are spectacular. So it's going to be, um, a very popular place to have an office.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, other, other comments or questions? It does look like a very beautiful facility. Um, so Mr. Muller went over conditions. Mr. Muller, if you have nothing else, then I would ask somebody to make a motion.
Well, I want to spend, if I may, just a few minutes on, on conditions and ask a couple.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we, yes, please.
And, and I, and I, I don't know if I need to repeat the ones that, that we, we discussed already. I don't think I, I do, but I will have.
Don't need to repeat those, but, but yes, others.
Okay. Jim, uh, in your report, are there any conditions that we should add that we've not discussed tonight?
Not, no, just the standard reports of, uh, cost estimate to determine performance bond and, and inspection fees. You know, it's all listed in, in the report. I had no other concerns besides what was raised in stormwater management and traffic.
Okay. Okay, so just your the usual conditions, you usually have a, a list of conditions, but the only ones I see are about the sewer connection fee and.
That's it. This is a clean, a clean application.
Okay. Hold on one second.
Jerry's not happy unless he has enough conditions to write down.
Well, there were quite a few conditions in the sprab report that, but that, that report was from early in the summer or maybe even the spring. And, and so a lot of what it called for was addressed, I think, at, um, at the sprab meeting where the university presented on its various systems. Um, the, the university testified that aspirationally would like to meet lead. I guess you didn't testify about whether you would seek the well.
We, uh, we, we looked at it, but we're not, we're not.
Wrote it down four times and I still can't remember. Sorry.
We're, we're not, we're not pursuing well certification.
Okay. Oh, and that has to do with, because of what it would require elsewhere on campus and.
Yes. Yes.
And, and, um, I, I'm sorry, Louise, I just wanted to, to make it clear because I, I'm not sure if Jerry saw it. Or we did, um, sort of go through in our testimony and slides all of the conditions or all of the questions raised by the review reports. Um, we could also supplement with a written response as well. Try to clear, um, response to some of the questions where it needed a little explanation of what we were doing. So I just wanted to make that part of the record as well. But, um, I, I, I think, uh, um, what you've discussed so far, Jerry, seemed to make sense to me.
Yeah. And the only thing I see from.
Oh, I'm sorry. My other thing was, I don't know if it's, we really need to hear, but there may be some early, um, utility connections. So I wanted to put that request for the early start to the discretion of the engineer. If, if, you know, if it determines that there's something we need to connect early on or do.
Yeah, the, the same condition that we've been.
Always.
Applying to, to the university.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I could go through the, the proposed recommendations in the sprab report, but, um, a number of dealt with stormwater management.
I think that's not necessary, Jerry. I think that's really all water under the bridge at this point.
I agree with that. I think that it would, I think it would help to go through, um, quickly the university's responses to the various reports, at least part of that. Because I noticed, uh, at least where they, um, are saying straight up they'll comply, that those can be just incorporated into um, the finding of fact. For example, well, the, that, that's not a, um, a super long document and I think it's.
Okay, let me, let me, let me very quickly go through that then. Um, there was a, a comment about, um, I think this was from Dan Dopermuth. Now, I don't know if he even did it in there, 51 trees would be planted, fourteen of which would be planted onsite. We've seen that in the balance would be planted on prospect. I don't think we have to put anything in on that because I've always had as a standard condition for the university that everything in their slide presentation, that's not, that's not inconsistent with any of the other conditions uh, and that are site plan elements, uh, would, would be implemented by the university. And they've already shown that with respect to.
Most of these, I, I think we are really just testimony responses like that question. How are we going to satisfy and our testimony went through, we're going to put the trees.
Yeah.
Then we showed the ones on prospect, we showed the ones onsite.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. It's very few actually.
And address questions.
Right, in terms of, in, in terms of the green building checklist, um, uh, the P E C asked that when final decisions are made on, um, uh, on materials, et cetera, et cetera, that they be conveyed to, um, uh, P E C.
And you'll have, you have no problem. We'll do that.
And then the, um, one of the, uh, other comments by the university is the project will, uh, employ red list free, um, materials to the extent possible, so we'll put that in. Uh, then there was a. Uh then there was a uh the condition that the existing trees will be provided by an arborist hired by the university. Um, the applicant will consider selections of before, okay, the project is targeting legal certification, blah, blah, blah. Now, stuff in terms of of um LED lighting, et cetera. Is that already on the plans?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have to do anything on that. Um. Then there's a couple of things from the shade tree commission. Where the university, the shade tree commission indicator of the trees that are to be removed, the university might consider not removing, just consider. And then they list a number of trees, number forty-eight, forty-nine, et cetera. Okay with that, Ron?
In our response, um, we identified the reason why those trees are being removed. It has to do with ground utilities.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. Um. Then we'll have the standard condition we've had in about fencing, et cetera, same one we had in in uh ESCs. And then is there anything in the uh the PEC um report that there's a lot of recommendations that has popped out to members of the of the board that they'd like to include? No. Okay. Staff, staff's comfortable with that? So that's it. So it's preliminary and final major site plan approval. It's the eleven variances for the signs, for the sign design and dimensions and the conditions that we discussed tonight and I just discussed now.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Sax?
I'd like to move that we um move this application with the eleven variances and uh the um Jerry, do you want to elaborate? Can't hear you.
You're on mute, Jerry.
The eleven variances for the uh the building, we finding signs as to dimension and design, they'll go we'll have a condition that says that'll go to the zoning officer for his review and approval. And then um preliminary and final site plan approval being granted and the conditions we discussed.
So moved.
I will second in good health.
Moved by Ms. Sax, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Um Carrie, would you call the role, please?
Uh before I call the role, I wanted to advise that Mr. Chow joined the the discussion at eight o'clock. So I was not aware of that. And Mr. Chow, did did you, were you present when uh the meeting started or were we already discussing the proposal?
Yeah, I missed the beginning of the proposal.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Um, roll call is as follows. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I did just notice um that uh SBRB had noted that it was pleased to hear that construction would not begin until ES and Cs is complete, but the university replied that that is not correct. Can you just speak to the timeframe that you expect for this project?
It's in our responses. I think we're beginning the summer of twenty twenty-two and finishing in the summer of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
But can we, Christopher, can you see that in response? And I think that's what we said.
Uh, yes, I can tell you.
Yeah, that's what we said. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
All right, well, um, thank you very much. Um, it'll be very interesting to see this take shape as well, and we look forward to seeing the projects on either side of it.
We can't wait to bring all our projects forward all at once.
I heard that.
Adam Chair, I meant to say that one of the conditions for approval that we forgot was that the university not bring any applications.
I'm writing that down right now.
Remander of the calendar year, for the remainder of the calendar year.
Yeah, I'd like to move that, that, that motion, please.
All right. Well, thank you again. We will move on to our next um
Well done.
Next agenda item and um with with thanks.
Thank you.
So next up, we have um Twenty-One Wiggins LLC. This is a major site plan for Twenty-One Wiggins Street, block twenty-seven point zero two, lots forty-two, forty-three and forty-four. This is file number P twenty-one twenty-one dash zero three zero P. Um. Mr. La Place, you want to guess?
Yeah, thank you.
Rolling here.
Thank you, Chair Wilson. I'm gonna do it just.
Well, we have to, we have to.
For that, yeah, um.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I I'm really bad about asking about proper notice and jurisdiction.
This this is a little complicated, actually, because
Oh, okay.
They they noticed for a preliminary and final major site plan approval. And a variance from the setback and they explained why they had to do the setback where they where they were doing. But it came up in the in reports of somebody, it might have been Jim or somebody else, that it looked like they were proposing a to build a ten-foot wall in the rear yard where only a six-foot wall would be permitted. And if that's true, they would need a variance for that. And the municipal and use law and case law is quite clear that you have to specify all the variances in the notice. That was not specified. If they're not doing that and it actually is six feet, then there's no issue. Christopher, do you want to comment?
Yes, it's six feet.
Okay, so there's no issue.
We adjusted it to remove the variance.
Okay, so proof of publication service are in order, are they not? Um Carrie?
Yes, everything is in order.
Right, and notice is proper and the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm glad we're moving forward.
Michael, if you could raise your, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give the truth?
I do.
Just one affirmative.
Just wanted to make a few comments and um I'll start actually with the variance about the front yard setback. That actually comes out of the fact that there's, this property is within two zones. It's in the RB residence and business zone. And it's also in, it has an overlay, um the affordable housing one overlay zone. And the overlay zone requires, if you take it, if you take advantage of the overlay zone, it requires you to preserve the existing building on site, which in this case is the house at Twenty-One Wiggins, which is an existing situation, which has an existing setback. And it doesn't fit. So so in a way, it's kind of interesting how the two the two zones are kind of working here, but you'll hear more about that, I'm sure, from the applicant. What I wanted to say is that this is a very interesting project close to the center of our town. And um the catalyst was was what I just mentioned, our overlay zones, which are part of Princeton's fair share housing plan um to encourage the the um the generation of affordable housing units in Princeton. And um developers and property owners are starting to really take advantage of these overlay zones. We're seeing a lot of activity, and this is one of one of the sites. So you're going to hear about a multi-use residential project which incorporates an existing building. And um I think I'll just let the applicant get right into it since the hour is late.
Okay, uh, Mr. DeGresio, do you want to?
Sure.
Start us off.
Madam Chair, I I I had a question out of the professionals report, out of our professionals report. Is this the time to ask the question or after the applicant's presentation? Um, thanks. So it's uh Mr. Purcell's and Mr. Bridger's uh report uh on page four of seven. Um, you mentioned that the soil test was pending and the results would be shared with your office. Were they shared, uh, Mr. Purcell?
I have not seen the soil test, no.
So I I ask because uh what would the nature of the of such a soil test be? Like, how deep would they test the soil down?
Well, typically, a soil test pit would uh be dug deep enough to determine what the seasonal high water table is. And uh any um stormwater infrastructure that was to be constructed would need to be two feet above that. Um, so it is an important component of uh being able to manage the stormwater and also to determine whether or not the soils are capable of infiltration and at what rate the uh water would infiltrate into those soils. So I see Mr. Smith has unmuted himself and um so maybe he will do it in testimony.
I just, I'd like to to let you know where I'm going with this because on the HPC memo on page two of seven, they referenced that most of the lots on uh Tulane were vacant until nineteen eighteen. And we know that the High Tops building was built around that time, nineteen twenty, but we also know that in the backyards of those structures was the Princeton Lighting and Gas Works, uh which was a coal gasification plant that operated from the eighteen fifties to the, I think, to nineteen twelve. Um, and but there was contamination of the soil on that site that required a large and expensive mediation, uh remediation, uh sorry. Um, a large cleanup on the site. And so I, my concern here is that the the gas operations basically took the entire from Witherspoon to what is now Van Deventer prior to when Tulane was built. And so I think it's important to know whether the contamination that was found during the Withers, the downtown redevelopment, which included the apartment building and the Spring Street garage, which is right next to this site, whether the contamination seeped into into that area. So I I I bring this up because it wasn't noted in any of the reports. And to me, it was you know, this was the biggest environmental remediation in the thirty years that I've been in Princeton. And I just uh, just to be clear that um my memory and my understanding is that uh the byproducts of coal gasification are tar and um and uh coke and that both were found in substantial quantities on that site and had to be cleaned up. So I'd be very interested to hear anything about the underlying soil uh before shovels go into the ground on this site. Hopefully, it's it's a non-issue, but um again, the the, just to fill in the history, in nineteen fifty-eight, the utility sold the land to Princeton Borough, which of course put a big surface parking lot on there. Uh, the library was built on that site in the mid-sixties uh with out the knowledge that there was contaminated soil on the site. Sorry, kind of a skunk, skunk at a party, at a garden party here, but um.
We can speak to those questions during our testimony. I have answers to.
Really important context. Good, great.
Yeah. Very helpful.
Okay, Mr. DeGresio, do you want to, do you want to start?
Start us off? Absolutely. For the record, I'm Christopher DeGresio from the law firm of Fegory Drinker. Um, here on behalf of the applicant Twenty-One Wiggins LLC. As Mr. La Place said, this is a preliminary and final site plan. Um, it involves an adaptive reuse of an existing structure that will have commercial on bottom and a residential unit on top. And then building from there, there will be a new building with eighteen units. And out of those, there will be four affordable housing units in that. It's it's kind of exciting. I think I I may be wrong, but my understanding is this may be the first under the overlay could be affordable housing overlay. So in that way, it's kind of exciting to bring this application. Um, and uh, you know, with that being said, I want to jump right in. We have a presentation. We have a number of experts. Would you like us um to have them all sworn in first, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, so Aubrey, we'll start with you.
Okay, if everybody who's going to testify can raise their hands, that'd be great. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Affirm.
Fine, if you could, starting with Aubrey, if you could go around, give your full, full name and spell your last name.
Hi, I'm Aubrey Haynes, A U B R E Y H A I N E S, Princeton Property Partners, managing partner.
Thank you.
And either Mr. Haynes or Mr. DeGresio, can you just call uh, call on your other experts?
Yep, Ralph Patrelli.
Uh, yeah, Ralph A. Patrelli, that's P as in Peter, E T R E L L A. From Dana Harvey Associates, Site Civil Engineer.
Robert Smith?
Robert Smith, S M I T H. I'm a project architect at Kosia Moose Architecture.
Sergio Kosha?
Uh Sergio Kosha, C O S C I A, uh principal and architect at Kosia Moose Architecture.
Thank you. George Jackamar?
George Jackman, J A C Q U E M A R T, a traffic and parking consultant.
I think that's it. Did I forget anybody? If so, speak up. So uh, yeah, so so like I said, this is um exciting. It's in the residential business, but also under the affordable housing overlay zone. There are a number of really nice positive attributes about the project, like a green roof, uh preserving some of the large trees, EV charging stations um that will eventually be able to to cover the the lot. Um interior bike storage and like I said at the beginning, the adaptive reuse of an existing structure. I'd like to start off with introducing Aubrey Haynes, representative of the applicant. He's already been sworn in. Aubrey, can you uh uh introduce yourself and tell a little bit about um the applicant here and the project?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for staying so late. We appreciate your um perseverance in hearing our project, hearing about our project. Uh, I'm uh, as I said, managing partner with Princeton Property Partners. This is our fifth investment in Princeton. We um have um been working on this project for actually about six or seven years with the folks from High Tops. Um, as of, uh tomorrow will be exactly one year to the day since we purchased the property. And we've been working with the folks from Kosia Moose uh architects uh to design what we feel is a very attractive building for the town, uh and it also incorporates four affordable units. Um, we um, we have uh in the properties we've purchased in town, uh we have added value with each uh investment. Uh, we've taken properties that are um in some way, shape or form, um you know, to to, you know, less than their potential value and have added um both investment in time, but also in dollars to try to improve the properties. Um, and this is certainly the case with this property. Uh, we had looked at a couple of different scenarios. Uh, we looked at a three-story building, which would uh cause the demolition of the existing building. Uh, and then we uh looked at the affordable overlay and spoke with the folks from town, uh your professionals about the the pluses and minuses each of the different um um proposed developments. Uh, and we chose to go with the affordable overlay um uh with the preservation of the existing um uh structure. Um, so we're really excited about the project. Uh, and um to respond to Mr. Quinn's uh inquiries, because we had the exact same concern before we even did anything in terms of our due diligence. We had SGS Barco Environmental Firm perform soil analysis uh at the property uh to see if there were any pollutants. Uh, and they found none. Um, and uh so we were, because I I didn't know as much of the history as Mr. Quinn has given us this evening, but I did um have some uh knowledge of the history of the potential for polluting, for the for soil pollution. And and we, and again, we didn't find any. And we have had a geo tech um analysis. Melik Tully has done a uh analysis for us. They've done several deep boring uh bores and uh and I think we've shared that information. I think Ralph uh Patrelli can get, can provide some uh testimony on that, but we've shared that information with with the professionals at town. Uh, if we haven't, Ralph will certainly do so. So um, looking forward to making our presentation this evening.
Great. Thank you, Aubrey. Um, I would like to bring up our project engineer, Ralph Patrelli, to tell us a little bit about the existing conditions and site plan. Ralph, you've been sworn in. Ralph, you've been sworn in, but I, I would like to have you qualify. Can you tell us a little bit about your, um, your experience and, um, education?
Sure. Uh, I have a Bachelor's of Science from Druxley University. Uh, I work at Danote Harvey Associates, uh, as a senior project coordinator. I have been doing site civil work for twenty-six years, and I have testified in front of this board and, uh, other surrounding boards many times.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we would like to mark into Exhibit A one, which is the presentation that we've, we sent in. If somebody, um, I'm not sure, Robert or somebody going to pull that up on our team so we can show it? Okay, so this is a PowerPoint presentation. And we'll mark it as, uh, applicant's Exhibit A one.
Okay, uh, so this is just a, uh, elevational representation of the project, uh, showing the, the, the building in relation to the existing building that's going to remain, uh, with the entrance out onto Tulane Street. Just got to waste a second. Uh, so this is the second sheet, which is Sheet CE one in this, uh, package that was submitted to everyone. This is the Sydney Plan and Key Map, just to show the general location of the site in relation to Princeton. Uh, as you can see, it's, it's in the center of the large key map. Off to the left, it provides a slightly larger, uh, view of the property. Next. Uh, so this is also, uh, part of the submission package. This is the boundary and topographic survey. This shows the existing conditions of the site, which shows the two existing buildings in the dark gray. And there is a existing patio, some walkways, and an existing parking lot with the, uh, access onto Tulane Street. Next. Again, this is another, uh, plan that was in the submission set. This is, uh, the C for the site layout plan. Uh, what this plan does is it, it removes the portion of the building that's actually over top of the parking lot, just so you can see, uh, how the parking lot will sit on the site. Uh, as we've already, uh, stated before, this is in the RB and the overlay zone. Uh, what we're doing is we're removing the one building that's closest to Sylvia Beach Way, and we're removing all of the patio walks and existing parking lot that's in the rear of, uh, the site. There's also a small portion of the existing building that will be removed, uh, just so we can fit the, the building in. Now, go back to the, sorry, stay with the previous one. Uh, so we're providing fourteen parking spaces with eight charging stations. Uh, the charging stations will be set up such that in the future, every single spot will be provided. Uh, but as of right now, they will only be servicing one, and then as the need increases, uh, they can add the secondary system to it. So it'll all be powered as if it can function for two, but only set up for one at this time. There is a net increase in the impervious surface, and this puts us into a minor uh, development that we have to meet, and that requires us to detain two gallons of stormwater runoff for every square foot of new impervious. In this case, we would need to detain seven thousand gallons. We are putting a underground stone storage system in the center of the parking lot. And that is roughly twenty by fifty and approximately two and a half feet deep. The system is, will contain the two gallons per square foot increase within the underground stone storage. That is equivalent to the, to your storm. We are also providing a approximately nineteen hundred square foot green roof at the top of the new building. Uh, that will be able to handle approximately fifteen hundred gallons of, of running, of rain runoff. Um, that is in addition to the stone, you know, the stone storage. We're also providing rain barrels at the corner of the existing building to help reduce the, you know, some volume under existing conditions. Uh, the rain barrels will be set up such that once they're, they're full, there's an overflow, and the overflow will drain naturally as it does now, out towards Wigan Street. The underground storage is set, so it's all contained. Any runoff from the roof will get into the underground storage. Any rain that does happen to hit the exposed parking lot, it will sheet flow and get into the underground storage. What'll happen is once the amount of, uh, infiltration has been exceeded for what the amount of orders coming in, it will sheet flow across the sidewalk and get into the, the gutter of North Tulane. Uh, there was, as Aubrey mentioned, we did have a GeoTech report. The GeoTech report shows that the soils are desoils. While there is minimal infiltration, there is some, uh, approximately zero point two inches per hour. Uh, so whatever happened, whatever is inundated, again, will just she flow out into the system. One of the questions that came up was, uh, I guess there's a little differential between the elevations on some of the plans and the, and the site plans as it relates to the sidewalk crossing the entrance to the parking lot. So the plan is to continue the, the concrete sidewalk straight through with a concrete apron, uh, off of North Tulane. So there will be no need for curb cuts or, uh, ramps in that area. It will just be functioning like it does today. Uh, also, uh, slightly north, there's an existing wall. We'll call it that, uh, parallels North Tulane Street. Goes up to the corner, so there will be a portion of that. Uh, that's, uh, that goes from the parking lot up to where the new paver walk is out from the amenities area that is planned right of the existing building. And we will, that will continue towards the existing building to maintain the grades. There's also, uh, patio paver to plan left of the existing building as shown on these plans. Uh, one of the comments from Sprab was the size of the patio, and we have relooked at that. You will see it later in the presentation, uh, but we have reduced the patio. The other thing that we're looking at here is, um, to raise the grades. Right now, the way it was submitted is that there was a eighteen to twenty-four inch cut along the existing building to put that patio in. We're now going to put that patio at grade. One of the things we did look at as part of this project is porous asphalt and porous pavers for, you know, porous asphalt for the parking lot and porous pavers, uh, excuse me, uh, for the patio. And it's just given the, the low infiltration and given the proximity to the basement of the existing building, it's not feasible to put the, any, uh, infiltration under the patio. Uh, what you typically have is the zone of influence of the water that gets stored in there. Uh, typically comes out as a forty-five degree angle, and you typically, at the very least, want a minimum of ten feet separation from that underground storage to any building. And so in that case, it would not be feasible. As far as the parking lot, uh, given the requirements for maintenance, which requires street sweepers to go in and clean the porous material with the columns and the overhead of the, the building, it's just not feasible to get that, to get a truck in there. And considering, uh, over eighty percent of the parking lot will be covered by the building, uh, it, it just, it, it didn't seem feasible to use porous pavement for only those areas. And the simple fact that we couldn't maintain it the way it would be required. And, um, all traffic, you, you'll hear from George Jacmar is that there will be minimal impacts, uh, for the traffic just simply going from an office space to a residential space. And I believe that's, that's everything that we had to hit as far as, uh, site, unless I missed something, Chris.
We could always come back. So that was slide four, and I think we're on slide five now. And I'd like to introduce our architects, um, from the same team. Robert and Sergio, can you tell us a little about your qualifications, uh, each one of you?
Sure, I can. Sergio Kosha, I'm, um, co-founder and principal of Koshy Moose Architecture. I, uh, I'm licensed in New Jersey, obviously in Pennsylvania and New York and various other states. Um, been practicing for slightly over thirty years. Uh, have a undergraduate degree in the University of Pennsylvania, master's degree from, um, University of Maryland. And I have done testimony before, um, in and around New Jersey.
Robert?
I'm Robert Smith. Uh, we got my Bachelor of Design and Master's of Architecture from the University of Florida. I've been practicing for about five years, all at Koshy Moose Architecture, uh, primarily under the multifamily, um, project type.
And did I, I, I assume you're licensed in New Jersey? I didn't hear.
I'm, I am, sorry, I'm licensed in Pennsylvania.
Uh, I'm licensed in New Jersey.
Okay.
Sergio has supervised, signed all the plans. Uh, Robert's part of the team, knows some of the specific stuff. He's licensed in Pennsylvania, but not in New Jersey.
Okay. We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, uh, page forward to slide six. Oh, I'm sorry, slide five. Yep, slide five of the presentation, Architectural Site Plan A zero 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 is on the corner, and I guess, uh, I think, um.
If Robert can.
Okay.
So just continuing on from what Ralph was, um, discussing, this is the site plan showing the roots of the existing building and our new addition. Um, you can see the outline of the green roof on the north section of our, of our building, um, the condenser farm, and, uh, just the circulation on how to get around on the roof. You can also see the patio on the, uh, bottom left corner of the new building and the, uh, patio facing, uh, Tulane Street between the existing building and the new one. You can also see, uh, a series of balconies and terraces are providing for the multifamily, um, units. No, next one. Uh, so this is the ground floor plan, um, showing, um, first the parking on the, uh, right side of the sheet. We can see the outline of the building above using the dash line. Uh, our building lobby faces Tulane Street. Uh, with that, we provide package stores, lockers, and mailboxes, and then a tenant amenity suite, which can be used for various meetings, gatherings, or just, um, social spaces. Between that amenity space and the existing building, we have, um, our residential amenity patio, uh, which kind of references all the other properties in the neighborhood. We noticed that a lot of these sites had, um, front patios for, uh, the tenants. So we want to provide that space for all the tenants that live in our building. More towards the rear, we have our bike room, um, and then very, uh, our mechanical storage space, um, and then our trash room.
Mr. Smith, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you or someone use your cursor to, uh, indicate where these, each place is that you're, that you're talking about? I'm not, I'm not asking you to go back over what you've already said, but it's helpful to.
Just point out.
Because the, yeah, the writing on the screen is really small.
Okay, so I guess the parking is pretty visible, so I'll just go, um.
Yeah.
I'll go to the entrance. There's a vestibule, um, with a package stores, lockers right below. Um, we want to note that to the right of the vestibule is, uh, pedestrian access directly from Tulane um, into the garage space. So I think there was a note about someone was worried that pedestrians would be hit by cars, but we do have access into the garage without having to go, um, straight down the drive aisle. Um, the tenant amenity space is next to the entrance and the package storage area with the, of, of the, um, outdoor patio next to that, that is direct access into the tenant amenity space. And then you can see, uh, bike storage down below, um, and then mechanical space and trash storage. And then we have our two means of egress, provided, uh, one towards the existing building, the staircase, and then the other staircase more towards the, uh, garage. Go to the next slide.
Now we're on slide seven.
Uh, yeah, so this is the second floor, which would be the first floor of the, um, residential units. This floor contains, um, two affordable units and four market rate units. Um, the two four-way units are a three-bedroom and a two-bedroom apartment, both located in the corners facing, um, Sylvia Beach Way, but also fa- one facing Wigan Street and another facing, um, east towards the Jason property. One thing to note is that the three-bedroom affordable unit is actually the largest unit in the entire building, um, beating out another one by over a hundred square feet. And then we have, uh, three market rate units, um, facing Tulane Street, and then one market rate studio facing Sylvia Beach Way. Um, all of these meeting the minimum square footage criteria set forth by Princeton. Um, moving on up, still have six units per floor. This floor also has two affordable units. Um, we have a two-bedroom on the corner. Or I'll say, oh, yeah, two bedroom on the corner, and then, uh, a one-bedroom, a four-way unit in the center. Um, and then the remainder of the units are market rates. Um, one thing to note is that all of the, um, rental units in the building have a balcony. There was a comment that the second floor, um, affordable unit was missing one, but we have added that in, which we will show, um, on a later, uh, slide. Uh, and then moving on up. So this is the fourth floor. Um, this floor is all made up of all one-bedroom market rate units. One thing to note is that we didn't want to make the C, uh, the building seem very like monumental and large when it faces Tulane Street. So on the fourth floor, we brought back the facade, um, an extra five feet and created terraces along that. So it kind of reduces the impact on the street and makes it much more, uh, much less imposing to pedestrians. Um, moving along to the next slide. Again, this is just showing, um, your basic roof plan, uh, the outline of the green roof for about nineteen hundred square feet, uh, locations of condensers. Um, w- we had a comment asking if the roof would be accessible to tenants, and it is not. This roof is only going to be maintained by the property management team. Um, there's only a small roof hatch accessed by alternating tread device. There's no, um, public stairway that goes to the roof.
We're on slide ten, just for the record.
Okay, um, I think we can move along to the elevations. Um, here's each of the elevations from each of the streets and frontages. Um, we are providing, um, a brick base on the Tulane and Wigan Street side. a brick base on the Tulane and Wigan Street side. And that is kind of our our foundation of the building up above on the multifamily units. We're providing horizontal siding. These are materials that we found very prevalent within the neighborhood. I think we did some walkthroughs on the site visit and almost every building we saw had this horizontal siding. Some of the streets or the buildings nearby on Tulane have been using more bricks. We wanted to reference those materials and bring them in to this building. One way that we didn't want to make the building seem flat and just way too imposing was that we broke up each of the floors with a ribbon of a white metal. Which, as I said, like makes it seem less large and just less of a blank facade. We're also providing the maximum size windows as we can. Though that will meet the energy code, but provide the maximum amount amount of light within the spaces as possible. We're showing sconce lighting and balcony lighting underneath some of the balconies. Where where we can, where it's allowed. Can we go to another facade, Mitch? And then in the rear of the building, we are just providing the fiber cement horizontal siding all the way to the base. Does there any, have any questions so far?
I'm not seeing, let me.
Well. I will.
Mr. McGowan is gonna have questions. Why don't you finish your testimony?
Yeah.
And then and then Will invite questions. How's that?
Okay, that sounds, that sounds fine. So I guess we'll, we'll keep moving on, Mitch. Here's just a few details of the project. So up top, we have a detail on the signage we're proposing. Just a small sign along the brick facade, notating the the name of the apartment complex. Below that, you can see a small detail showing how there will be under the balconies, we'll be providing some some down lighting that'll meet the the lighting code from Princeton. And we we will be engaging a lead consultant to help us design all the exterior lighting and make sure it's a comfortable temperature for for the neighborhood. And then there's a small section showing the green roof tray. Which is like a little detail. It's it's not similar. It's not like a, you're just pouring soil onto the roof. It's a, it's a modular tray system that can be placed on and then repaired easily. Which we found to be very beneficial for this project. The the seeds or the plants that is going to grow aren't going to be large plantings will be small sedums. So the upkeep will be minimal once they get established. And go to the next slides. I think the next ones are lighting analysis. So this is some analysis from our consultant that we engaged showing the foot candles and lumen levels around the property based on the exterior lighting that we're proposing and also the garage lighting. And these meet the 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 numbers set forth in the zoning code for Princeton. We can keep going. And then here's just some simple renders. We think it's important to show that we are maintaining some vegetation on the site. So on the cor, on the both of the corners on Wigan Street, there are two large prominent trees, a large oak tree. And then a Japanese maple that we are going to be keeping with this project. We found that because we are touching really the existing house that these would be very easy to maintain and would be a positive to the neighborhood. You can see the exterior amenity space we're providing as a separation between the existing house and the new building. We're proposing some street vegetation that and we're engaging consultants about along both Wiggins and Tulane Street. And then you can see how the building steps back on the fourth floor from Tulane to make it seem less imposing on the neighborhood and the street. And then this is just a street level view.
We're we're on slide sixteen, just for the record.
This is a street level rendering, showing pedestrian view how the building would sit on the site. We, just a note, we hid the the corner tree just to make the the rendering more visible. Yes, this is just showing how the building will sit in relation to the existing site. And then you can see some context from other houses along Tulane Street and along Wigan Street. So here are some exhibits that we prepared in response to some of the questions. The first one is concerning an accessible ramp. So as part of the demolition for to prepare for the new building, we're removing the only ramp that gets into the the house. So to make the, to keep the level of accessibility for the site, we're going to be providing a a ramp on the corner of Sylvia Beach and Wigan Street that has access to Wiggins. So this building will maintain its accessibility level. That ramp will lead directly into the elevated patio that Ralph was discussing earlier in the site planning portions of this presentation.
And we're on sheet nineteen and the patio, since our last meeting, I guess before Scrab and HPC was pulled back from the property line, correct?
Correct.
And it's at ten feet now.
Correct. One comment was that HPC wanted to see a proposed plan of what we intended to do with the existing house. So like Aubrey and Chris said, the first floor, we're going to maintain as an office tenant. We don't know what that tenant is at the moment. But it's it's a small office suite that'll have access directly to that elevated patio and to the existing stoop entrance from Wigan Street. We were able to align the second floor of our building pretty close with the existing second floor of the existing house. Which we thought was a really, a really good touch. So that tenant will have access to the new building's amenities, the new building circulation. And will be able to fit a a one bedroom unit in that existing house. Bike storage was a comment that we received. So we calculated that the the minimum number of long term and short term bicycle parking that will be required. We we meet and exceed that number. A request was also made to provide exterior bicycle parking along Tulane Street for any visitors that come along. So we decided to place some some bike racks along Tulane, right by the amenity patio space. Which one is this? And then we're also proposing some signage for the office tenant. Right now, High Tops has painted on their signage onto some columns on the entrance, but we felt that we need to provide a a more visible sign for whichever tenant goes into that first floor space. So just a simple brick base and with a aluminum frame. They'll tie back to the 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 materials that we're using in the new building. And this sign we designed to not require any variances. This is going to be compliant with the Princeton zoning code. And then one comment was that, like I said earlier, this doc, this room originally didn't have a balcony, but we just provided a balcony for the affordable, affordable unit right next to the studio balcony. And you can see on here a little bit more detailed how we have lighting shown. So if if we have a a space that has a balcony above, we're going to provide lighting within that balcony ceiling to shine down. If we have a space that doesn't have a balcony above, we're going to provide a a sconce on the wall to provide the lighting for the balconies. And then there was a comment we received about the wall. I think we resolved that, the very first thing we talked about. We reduce the height of the site wall to be six feet, to not require variance, while still providing some privacy for the the cars parked behind. And then, like Ralph said, we're maintaining the continuous sidewalk across the driveway for the parking area. Is that it? Okay, yeah, this, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGowan, I I know you have questions. So I'm gonna ask you to pose those. I I don't want to go much past eleven. I want to, you know, do our best to observe our eleven o'clock rule, but I also want you to be able to ask your questions. So Carrie, Philip, I would ask you to be, while Mr. McGowan is asking his questions, be looking at upcoming planning board meetings and agendas so that we can make a quick decision close to eleven o'clock about what, when we will continue, you know, what meeting will continue this this application to. Mr. McGowan?
I think my question should be fairly quick. As far as your affordable, affordability go, you're using the twenty percent set aside. That's how you can work four units, correct? Okay. The other questions I had. Okay, you answered one of them. And I guess really, the only thing I can think of right now is as far as the geotech reports go on the land, can you submit those? There are written reports? I was thinking, Mr. Quinn, what Mr. Quinn was asking, because as far, as part of the presentation, can you please submit those reports?
Yes, as a condition of approval, we would be happy, or you know, if we don't read the decision today, we'll, we'll be happy to provide it to Jim.
Yeah, you you should provide those tomorrow. We, you know, not, not as a condition of approval.
I I gotta ask Ralph, are they in a
I can email, I can email.
Okay, good, alright.
And I, well, I, I guess the other question was kind of quick. As far as again, the affordables go, and you've already mentioned that there, there are going to be four of them. They are going to be, otherwise you have client. I mean, there's a certain number have to be low and moderate, certain number can be marked. So you're going to comply with that?
Required by the state, we are complying fully with their requirements.
They have size requirements, they have bedroom requirements, and we're meeting all of them.
Okay. That's, that's all I wanted to ask.
So what is the breakdown of moderate, low and very low on this project?
Fifty percent has to be low. Third, now, let's get this backwards. Thirteen percent of that fifty has to be very low. So essentially what you're gonna, I think, the way it's going to break down is you're gonna have two market. One.
Two moderate, you mean?
Yeah, two mu, two moderate, one low and one very low. I think.
Correct, Mr. Haynes?
That sounds right. I I didn't commit it to memory. Isn't it on one of the drawings?
I think we just called it out as the bedroom types. But yeah, we 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 had some conversations with the affordable housing people.
Okay.
Yeah. I I think I have an email here. I'm pulling up from, so we consulted Tony Marqueta, who used to run the one, one of the state's funding group, yeah, for the, so there's one ma which is so you a, you HAC require the following four units, one unit at thirty percent, one unit at fifty percent, two units at eighty percent. So that's what we're providing.
Oh, okay, that's right, they. Alright.
Of me, me, those percentages are of median income?
Yeah, yeah.
So Mr. McGowan was correct. Yeah, that we we have one that's low, one that's very low, and two that are moderate.
Okay.
Mr. Marchetta was head of the HMFA, so he.
Yep.
Thanks, Mia, yeah. Okay, it's ten fifty-five. Carrie, what are the upcoming agendas look like? When might we pick this up again?
Well, we have two meetings in the month of December, December second. We're looking at the, at Landwin. We're hopefully concluding on that matter with Mr. Afrin. Cross examining. And then we also have the East Garage signage. That should be very quick. I think this would be a good thing to tack on to the ninth. We're looking at another project very similar to this, also in the same area of town, Princeton International Properties. So I think I would like to do it that night.
Yeah, I I agree that it's dangerous to put other things on with Landwin. So December ninth, i- is that a date that works for for you, Mr. Degrassia, Mr. Haynes, et cetera?
Yes, thank you.
I asked my consultants there to to weigh in, my architects and engineers.
That works for us, yeah.
Okay, great.
And can I make a, could I make a request? It sounded to me like a number of the things that were being described were changes from what's on the, on the submitted plans. Is that accurate to say?
We, we updated some of the exhibits to reflect some of the requests from Sprab and HPC. And we did submit these as part of exhibit package, Jerry.
As part of the exhibit package, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because we usually do the plan submission after, because staff doesn't want to have to do a whole new report based on a new set of plans. So we usually introduce it as an exhibit, and that's what we did here.
Okay, and and maybe it would be useful, Christopher, if you could just give, give me a letter that lays out what the changes are that's in the exhibits, but they're not on the submitted plan, so we can make those conditions. Okay?
Sure.
Smart. Okay. Well, thank you very much. This is a really interesting project. I look forward to you know, the rest of the questions and the rest of the testimony and public input, public comment, et cetera. Mr. Cohen, who usually moves to adjourn our meetings. Not here tonight.
I'll move, I'll move to adjourn.
Mr. Degrassia.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have to carry it without notice and all the, you know, to, at the time, say, without further notice and that the, it'll be available on a link on the agenda for anybody that wants to participate on December ninth, so.
Right, right. So this is right. Carrie, to December ninth, the meeting starts at seven PM. No further notice. Legal notice is required and just repeating everything you just said, Mr. Christopher. And a link to to join that meeting on Zoom will be available on the agenda, which is posted on the municipal website. Both, both under the planning office and and under the calendar. Mr. Quinn?
I had a question, Madam Chair, and I, I, I will, it'll take thirty seconds. Jerry, the soil report that's going, I assume that's going to Mr. Purcell ASAP. How is that going? How is that going to be, the results of that be communicated to the board, what would be appropriate for. For Mr. Purcell to summarize, I don't want to give him any more work than I'm, I'm sure he's.
I, I'd have no problem providing a supplemental memo.
Good, that's great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tim, that's important, okay.
I'll move, we adjourn.
Action.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Not even gonna ask for who's opposed or who's abstaining.
Fifty-nine and thirty seconds.
Okay, meeting Tuesday evening. See most ten.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks very much, and I'll, we'll see the rest of you on December ninth. Okay.
Night.